Again, have a good meeting.
Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the Central Plating Board Thursday, August twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. Hearing in the select, where are we? The Select Water Hearing Room. Everybody knows the drill, it's on Zoom, I'm very, we have a post your judgment against their second. Centered by Mr. Parry, all in favor?
Aye.
First of your judgment tonight is at six thirty P M, a public hearing, especially for a bit. Across from one on Jericho Road, National Bridge, folks on the floor. I'm gonna just give up few directions if you don't mind, we have this before. Now, how we're gonna go through this is we're gonna hear from the applicants. Then we're gonna hear from the top planner, then we're gonna take comment from the board, and then we'll take comment from the public. Few roles, now we raise their voices, there's no need to get any, we are administrative. And no ask for versions cost, so after anybody, so welcome, Mr. Parry, how are you doing today?
I'm well, how are you?
Thank you, I'm welcome.
Good evening to everyone, my name is Edward Parry, it's P A R E, I'm the attorney of Ron Riley. They're representing New City Wireless, PCS LLC, operating as AT&amp;T. At my right is Kevin Brewer, he should be familiar, he was with me at the last hearing in person. It is the radio frequency in there for AT&amp;T. On the remote side of things. We have Don Hayes up in the right corner, Don is.
Don is here.
Mission. Yeah, Don is the emissions expert and he appeared last time, I think also play remote. And Ben Paquette is a site acquisition agent for AT&amp;T, works for a company called Centaline. You'll see that there's. In the packets, they do the, work with identified poles and work for the National Grid. So thank you for. For being here this evening and I just wanted to remind the board that we were here back a little over a year ago, maybe four, five months ago. We had proposed two nodes and we want to provide a little bit of an update. One node was going to be near Bay.
Bay Ridge.
Bay Ridge. And we had some neighborhood opposition, we agreed before that we would take a look at a new site and see if we would bring, want that new site. There's a second node, we call the nodes these small cell facilities, that was proposed over on Allen Street, or Allen Avenue. We have identified the location, we recently received license part, so we will be back. That will be down, that will be located down in commercial district, so I think everybody will. Please without. With that said. I think I even referenced this site at our last hearing, this pole is available, it's near one oh nine Jericho Road, it's supposed to street one oh nine. The pole is already been replaced, we've got all that process works, I know it, so lots of events about that issue. But if I could share my screen on top of plans and. So this, different point of reference, this is the Jericho, this is Jericho Road, Bay Ridge to the left here. This is the proposed replacement pole, located on. East side of Jericho. And. Over in the bottom right hand corner is the existing pole, which has since been replaced. I will say that the existing pole, I know there was a lot of angst about this issue, will be, will be removed. And I'll discuss that a little bit on make ready discussion. You've seen this before, the antenna on the left hand side elevation, that's the antenna on the top with the mounting bracket, the cables will run within conduit. Down to the equipment cabinet, which you see there about eleven and a half feet off the ground. We then have a shut off switch, electric meter, and then brown rods next to the pole. You'll see in the middle of the. Elevation sheet, the. Orientation of the. Equipment cabinet will be over what used to be the side walk, not on the. Everything will be transferred over as part of AT&amp;T licensing process. Sorry, National Grid licensing process, AT&amp;T is required to submit an application to National Grid. They survey the pole, determine when it needs to be replaced. In this instance, they did replace the pole, all of the wires, et cetera, that's on the existing pole about to be moved to the new pole. So right now, I got it from the emails, the new pole is in place. The. Existing pole is still there with all of those wires, those will all be transferred over to the new pole. And AT&amp;T hopefully will receive approval and it backs to the.
So they replaced this pole like you're requesting?
They replaced the pole once we filed for the license and it's just a kind of issue, so if we submit to the license.
They tested in anticipation.
Correct.
Okay, that's all I want?
Antenna details, size, et cetera, it's located on sheet eighty two. I'll go to the. This is AT&amp;T's existing coverage map, so for this area in Sipuah, you'll see that we have pretty large of coverage. Kevin likes to achieve a nice solid green color if possible, blue as a backup. But you'll see the high connectivity. High data rates is green, the blue is high connectivity, moderate data rates. The reddish is marginal and poor connectivity gray with this proposed installation. AT&amp;T will achieve this, which covered. See, obviously you get a lot of solid green right near the site, also skips over waters and brings out green over to the northeast. It doesn't quite cover, as I said last time at the hearing, have quite as good a job as the site that we proposed at nine Bay Ridge. Reason for that is that it's at lower elevation, now near the water, so while. It won't achieve what we. Hope to achieve, it will get us an operating to improve from this.
So can you, I asked this question before, but can you explain the scale? Because it doesn't seem to align to a sort of. Published state about what is good and the bads.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn that over, we did get an email with a bunch of questions to respond to, but we'll take that up right now.
Have been. Whenever you want to do it.
Yeah, you go right now.
Yeah, so the, I think the question was. Some data suggests that between net fifty and net seventy one. Is what's needed for Africa City? I don't know where that information came from, but.
Yeah, just published, did Google it, right?
I did, I actually, I did Google, just to try to find out where, where that information may have came from, I couldn't come up to anyone, I suggested. But. Yeah, so at net fifty, actually at net sixty five, because I just did some test. This site around cover about sixty square meters. On macro sites, even at net eighty five, we can cover a third of a mile at best. So we have, with my twenty something years of experience, I never come across a threshold that high. It would be. I mean, I'll say, say distance, it would be.
You're the expert, I mean, I just.
Yeah.
Using public data to understand why there's such a discrepancy.
Yeah.
This is massive, right?
Oh yeah, net fifty, I mean, that is.
Oh, fifty to seventy is kind of what, you know, I've seen.
Yeah.
And we're talking the best you could do was, I think, too.
Well, that's not the best, that's just.
Well, I mean, you're saying that's, that's good.
That's what we need to, for, you know, high data rates. It all comes down to your signal noise ratio and. You know, obviously if your signal is high, you can explore more fannies, but. Next year to a net seven, even at eighty five, we are high, tough threshold to achieve. But. These are the standards that we start for.
This is a standard in the industry that.
Oh yeah, yeah.
How do we, how do we get that, how do we know that? I mean, this is just a scale on a map, so I'm asking, how can you get to? Which is, it's just a map with colors on it, a different scale, right, so I'm trying to understand how this equates basically.
To what?
To what is considered good and the inch.
So. As I said, I have twenty something years in the experiment in the industry and these are the standards. It's nearly impossible to get the thresholds that we're looking for, you know, financially, it'd be ruins. If we had to spend a thousand million dollars and kind of rely on. Get those standards, so I don't know, I mean, I really wish I could better address what you saw, but I could not find that.
Same there. Well, I mean, Kevin doesn't, I mean, different places, so.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't, no, if I was. I don't know why AT&amp;T would trust me to do my job and go out here and spend, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars on a, on a site that won't do. So I guess you would have thought that. These thresholds that I'm sitting here, that I'm showing, that I'm displaying, are the ones that are gonna work for AT&amp;T customers.
So.
But before I, before I, before we move on though, could I just address your comment? This isn't just a map with colors on it, this was produced by Kevin with analysis based on AT&amp;T's thresholds, so. You consider, well, but, but not like.
I mean, but all I see is, I don't see the scale, that's all I see, right?
That's what you see, but that's why he's here to explain.
Right.
How this was developed and your question. Were you questioning AT&amp;T's analysis, this is AT&amp;T's network.
No, I was questioning the scale, sorry, because I question even scale, I ask questions.
You ask what?
You say that's not something that's done in the industry, I would, well, where I found this stuff, is that the? Sounded like it was what was done in the industries.
I guess our position is.
Your position is what?
It's not done in the industry, he just explained to you what's done in the industry and particularly what's done for AT&amp;T.
Mr. Parry, can I see the screen before that again, is that?
Sure.
Just for the. And now within the pole, it's gonna turn over. Well, totally.
Not most, not most.
So signal is only for AT&amp;T.
Only for AT&amp;T.
Except for, except for E nine one one services, anybody that would connect to it.
And what happens with the other areas?
So with the other areas. You would, you would have connectivity. But, you know, you wouldn't be able to necessarily stream, but video. You know, if, if the network is too busy, the text messages might be delayed. You know, but what, what these small cells do is they. They provide a lot of capacity, a lot of resources. In an area in which is, you know, sufficient traffic. And that frees up those resources to be used in the larger network, so. So these areas that are just outside of where we're gonna serve well. They would have those additional resources to help. Make their experiences better, even though their signal strength won't be better, but at least there'll be more resources available so that. You know, eventually picture better. If you think about.
I guess, maybe I asked one too, what question, there are other areas here, fairly significant areas that are in your bad areas. What's the AT&amp;T plan for those, is, is there a network of these things that we're looking at? Just a really good question, and we can't see the bottom of this map, so.
Well, we, we do have the, the second small cell frame just off the, the bottom edge of the line.
What is, how does that change this map?
I don't think it really changes the map.
Well, unless if you put it in.
Well, it, it's off the map.
Well, it'll last, it'll last.
So you're gonna put another one down here, and then what about in the?
So, yeah, that's for us, before you ask what the other one is gonna do. We have thousands of sites that compete for dollars every year.
I know, sorry, it's hard to hear just because.
So we have thousands of sites that compete for dollars every year and, you know, we tried to go through a process to. Figure out which sites, which locations are most in need and we target those ones. We were able to get two in for sit right now, I don't have a plan for further ones. The original plan for this area was a, a macro site, a little bit inland, but. Oh, I'm sorry, a, a full power site. But, you know, due to zoning, lack of structures, you know, opposition or. Potential opposition, didn't seem like that was gonna go up there, so we fell back and decided to hit a couple of these areas that were. Drawing a lot of. Of usage that were typically for the bulk. So I don't have the. Plan yet for the rest and it's possible, you know, it could be a decade before that. Could happen in a few years.
This is possibly could be six months, a year.
It cannot be.
Two years?
I would say no.
Yeah, stretch them up a lot, right?
Right, I mean, like I said, we'd be on a thousand sites.
Just trying to understand breadth of this network of small cell towers, where we have.
Well, ideally, you'd like to rely on, on a full tower sites. Because they provide a lot more capacity, they provide larger areas of coverage that we don't have, or we don't need as many. Small cells we use until the last time. Last little bridge to get us across.
I think you'd be high pressed to find the way to put a full tower down there.
Yeah.
There's, well, remember I know the sequence of the message, we've spoken, I'm sorry, I'll add later, yeah, we'll tell that question later.
So I think I'm, I'm finished with the questions, but we are.
So it's fair to say. This is the second, the last one we're gonna see for quite some time.
This is the first one we're gonna see, we have the second one.
That's what I'm saying, the second to the last.
That is what you said, yeah, and after that, I don't have any plan, in a planning cycle, several days away, so.
Okay, so Karen, so they, they did say last year that they would re-study locations, so this is the first location that's coming back. And they are going to be bringing back another one in the harbor area. Because if you remember last year, it was on Allen and they said they would re-study it, that, that, he said they just got the license, so that something like that is gonna be. This here is Mike Mencello, he's our I T director, he has some information that may help the conversation.
Hi, everyone.
Sure, sure.
And yell at the screen. Yell at that gray part. Yell at that gray part.
Yes, I, and you. So, just listening to the conversation, I feel like I pieces the help, maybe I can contribute to the conversation. So. Forty years ago.
So, could I just, if anybody was to watch, this is our I T director.
Director of Technology for the town. So, four years ago, we, the town had a, our, our house for all cell servers through Verizon. We were asking Verizon endlessly to increase cell service, cover the holes in the coverage. And they kept, you're gonna drag it, you're gonna drag it, you're gonna drag it, and finally, we decided to know it enough of Verizon, moved to AT&amp;T, we're on their federally. Structure program called FirstNet, and they gave us at a reception, more so than the average consumer, first responders. So with that, we still see poles. But they, they helped close some of the poles that we were seeing with Verizon and at the time. The three main cell towers that service the town were out both Verizon and AT&amp;T, there, there were no small sites like this. Soon after leaving Verizon, Verizon put a small, what we're talking about, this very small cell attachment to a utility pole in front of the lanes on. Allen Place. And dramatically increased the signal for all the businesses down on Front Street. For personal experience, of trying to eat at, at a time, it was a, I barely, it just opened up. I went in, I couldn't even get a text, I didn't know if I even got, they were calling me from my table, because I couldn't have any, I didn't have any sauce. So that's all, we're with AT&amp;T, the day we signed the contract with AT&amp;T, I was already pressing them to close the gaps. Like, we knew we were going with AT&amp;T, we knew it was gonna be better for us, that we were on FirstNet. But we knew that there were still gaps in coverage, so I had already laid groundwork and said, hey, we need better coverage. Here we are a couple of years later, and we're doing it, which is fantastic. This one site is one of many poles that we have. So. That's a little bit of the background, we do have this hole, you'll still need to cover, is this gonna cover over by Lighthouse? It should be further north, for getting to the back, right, we're on.
Mount of the one.
So. Challenge that we have as a town are mostly police vehicles. They're, they have a mobile data terminal that we keep, they have a constant connection to seizure firm justice information system, which connects back to us. Our servers here in the inside, a live connection. At any point in time, in some of these poles, they might have no coverage at all, so their, their terminals will fall offline. Or sometimes they have such slow coverage that it's almost unusable. One of the big deficits we have is Lighthouse Road in Rebecca, is that book Rebecca, I think it's. All in, right where they're, right where they're putting the tower and they're down around Front Street. We also have a big hole on Long. Calley, so that's the, along the north shore, if you will, that's another hole that we have. I mean, again, fish don't have cell phones, so I understand why carriers aren't lighting along the edge of the water, so. So that's why we, that's why we have holes along water. I know, I've been in active conversations with Verizon recently, it was nine months ago, where they're looking, they're, they're calling up private citizens, they've done some research on. Land and what's available, they're, they're looking to put another full cell tower in town. Doesn't, doesn't mean that we're gonna go back to Verizon, it's just kind of, just kind of, you know, it's active, it's going on. AT&amp;T and Verizon are actually also on a new, new, relatively speaking, new pole up, until the nap, it's a private pole. And so you're back, yes, it's a mono pole. And from my understanding, I haven't seen it recently, but all the skin is swollen off of it, it's done, it's just repaired, so I know. Separate from that. I guess my point is, coverage is growing, there are cell tower, maybe there's an initiative by all carriers, at all, Verizon, AT&amp;T, and that's a. So there are, there's an initiative to expand self-coverage here in town, and I think it's been asked the issue for residents, never mind just for the town.
What's the story with that one of holes?
I don't know anything about it, other than it's.
It's on private property.
Private property and it's, both carriers were on it.
And it's small cell house?
No, it's, it's a, it's a.
I, I pervert, I zoned it, so I, I'm like, is that built in?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's, that's a small hole, not a full.
That's a full, that's a full power.
I know, I mean, it doesn't look like it though, it's just full.
It's a mono pole, yes, and the design is generally.
There's nothing on top of it.
And if, and, and correct me, does it not grow as far as some of the other stuff that sites do?
They don't, like, I think I explained last time, this one out here is, that's a bummer, I mean. That's what would be looked at, would never be something that high, but, you know, that's what a macro site would look like, it's not, it's not happening.
So you say it used to be a challenge that the police and fire are concerned with the lack of coverage?
I know for a fact the police are, so fire definitely use their N B Ts that actively, like, so they get it, they get the N E T, they're using it when they're pulling out of the station. So they know where to go, what calls them up, things like that, when they're on scene, they're not sitting at the terminal. Whereas police officer, he's on scene, he's on the computer terminal, he might be looking up if it is whatever the situation is, he will look up relevant to the call. He's needs his computer, anything from, you name it, domestic pilots, a, a traffic kit, he's using these term. Traffic kit gets sort of the exception, it's a ten call dispatch, and where I have that on the plate for. Typically, when a car, car goes up, behind a car, they can just type in the license plate, pull it up, easily know if it's gonna be going, like, extra cautious, because who the individual may be driving. But it's, it's that real time information.
Oh, sleep.
It is, the, the other piece of that, the, the whole entire cell conversation, that we definitely need to note. That in the summertime, when our population swells, our overall bandwidth and call capacity drops. Not the call passing, I mean, we, generally speaking, not specific to the town. As part of our FirstNet agreement with AT&amp;T, we get priority of preemption, so, preemption, so that means that if. If calls are saturated and, and you have your cell phone and trying to call, you couldn't get, can't access. Our devices, those. So, that came out of that. So. We don't experience that problem, but what we do experience is the lack of bandwidth to be able to transmit data packets from the terminal. Wireless back to the, the current justice system or to our network. So calls are really less of a concern for us, it's all about the computers, for us. The other thing I'd like to mention too is just high speed internet in general for, so our residents, more and more are getting high, high speed internet to the house. And they're doing a lot of this. Initiatives like this help that, so we're, we're bound by Comcast, and we can, we can complain about Comcast all the time. These are great alternatives, if we can get some, like, cellular wireless connections, it's a great alternative to Comcast. From my position here, for Director of Technology, I'm stronger to support this, and I've got the one that requested, AT&amp;T is.
Did we not spend money or appropriate money, never years ago, to. Wire the harbor so that the holders could communicate with each other?
Yeah, approximately nine. Ten, ten, ten plus years ago, we put in harbor Wi-Fi. And that technology aged, it started falling apart literally, breaking, the manufacturer owners were already shut down. The Waterways Committee has, had been reviewing different proposals about bringing it back and reintroducing it, but they're looking at it as a free, free internet. Program, nothing that people could ever chase a, a carrier to, that's free.
So it doesn't exist anymore?
As of today, it doesn't, the Waterways Committee is looking at it. But that said too, one of the needs, so, again, back when that first went in, the whole harbor was dark, we had no cell service in there. We didn't have cell service, not over until Verizon lit in front of the ladies, they put up the micro set. AT&amp;T is dark in the harbor right now, it's not dark, it's minimal.
I can't describe the harbor, I didn't.
So it's minimal for FirstNet, which means for the average citizen, there's probably none of this then. So again, you know, for, for people that are boats, this is huge, huge for people that are less. So I can, really, that's probably one of the bigger impacts, along with police and fire.
Do they interfere with each other?
Verizon comes down compared to.
We don't, so we, we all have our frequencies that we're allowed to use and the FCC, they regulate the appearance, there's a whole process, procedure, and if you conduct. I've been doing this for twenty seven years, I've never had an issue with, as, as long as you maintain some antenna separation, sometimes it gets busy, I have rooftops in Boston, but. Like, everybody's on this top of the mountains and. Sometimes it gets busy on rooftops in Boston, but like, everybody's on this topic, and so I've never come upon a full power.
How about they finish the rest of the presentation?
Sorry. Okay, redo my screen, I think it was like Boom. So this this is also uh, should be familiar to everyone, this was the alternative site analysis that we provided, we did one for each of the nodes. This was the Bay Ridge, so you'll see the pole five, or the Cylon Bay Ridge was the one that we did proposing, I think it's probably pole four dash one. Actually must be pole five. So we're looking to decide acquisition proposals and to get something
Four dash one.
Four dash one. That's the red dot, though, it's gonna be the yellow pole five. Let me, you know, I'll say, and I'll check. All right, four dash one is the one we had in competition, so we're hoping for one dash one, that was the original location, we went through that. Initially, we proposed to continue it until we found a solution, and the solution just took forever, so we went through. Uh so this is what the site acquisition company gets from Kevin's team to find a location, this identifies all the poles. Uh they all have an explanation for why it's gonna work, re-pin is the proposed installation. Which produces, you know, covered that, so. The last piece of information we have is relates to emissions, and I do have Don Hayes here. Uh I would also mention that all of these materials are in their application packets. Um the facility complies with the emission standards period. If there is, if you have any questions, or the collective grace I have done here, but, you know, frankly, this is not within its jurisdiction, we comply, I think we and beat this up last time. Certainly, it's a public hearing, people can discuss what they want, but we comply in a, you know, at the end of the uh discussion area, I mean. Uh I think we did provide a structural report, it's in the packet, where the replacement pole will support the equipment, and lastly, I'll just talk a little bit of ultimate ready. So AT&amp;T applies to National Grid to get a license on the pole to say to serve any place, National Grid, we approve it or not, issues a license, and then they put it in their schedule for me for anywhere. Now, on a, a typical pole replacement, they bring a pole in, we plant it, and involve all the wires. I think one thing that everybody has to remember is, all of the equipment on the pole is not all controlled by the same party, so you may have telephone cable screen on, uh there are, you know, various boxes that are attached, this is where people have the right to operate in all the right of way, and AT&amp;T is is one of those entities. We don't control that timing, I also think from a business perspective, when the utility company has an opportunity to get somebody else to pay for something, they'll do so. Uh so I'm sure that the replacement pole is being necessary for our attachment, they they own, they replace it. They're gonna, they own the pole, we get the whole pole, they're gonna move all the wires over, whether this is approved or not, National Grid's gonna end up with a pole that AT&amp;T paid for and like paid for like right. So I don't think it's aggravating to people at times, but it's not our property, National Grid decides what to do, when to do it. And the developer, the utility company, you know, if you have a call, they'll say, well, hold off, because I have to hear it in two weeks. They're just gonna move with that license, right?
If we were to move that one pole, will it all done, or will it always gonna be on the sidewalks?
Yeah, this is the only one moving now, I mean, the the nice thing about this is we do get it out of the middle of the sidewalk, and
Which is the ADA issue?
Police and fire, one of one of the departments made a comment about that, and so also the ADA issue. Uh so I know that there was, one of the objectors claimed that it's a busy sidewalk. Uh and I want to clarify, that pole is being moved, yet we're helping if it's a busy sidewalk. Uh and and for, you know, closer and have kind of access, uh use the sidewalk.
What were the ways for?
Um I think for the most part, that's, I mean, that's the discussion of the presentation, I I'm trying to think of other things that uh people, somebody else. I do have uh
Can you explain it, maybe, uh Yeah, they might already talked about this, but just, I've never heard this, FirstNet. You you mentioned that there are applications, FirstNet.
FirstNet?
Whatever it's called, yeah, can you just explain what that is?
Sure, so after nine eleven, the emergency, the first responders, emergency public safety officials realized that everything in New York was overwhelmed, communications just shut down, but bottom down. And uh federal government made a decision that that's not gonna happen again. So they created this uh FirstNet agency uh to work with carriers, they put it out to bid, AT&amp;T ended up winning it here. Um and what AT&amp;T has to do is provide FirstNet coverage, there's a specific frequency that they use that the IT director spoke of. But the other thing is that they do have a priority and preemptive uh signal or access to AT&amp;T's network, so just for an example, if if the network is overloaded, if there's a FirstNet call, everybody else getting booted off, so that FirstNet call, or that FirstNet connection goes through. Uh so it's, it's, it's a ten-year process, ten-year agreement, I believe, with AT&amp;T. Anyone interested in specifics, but I did see a question, uh there is a FirstNet dot com, uh it's a government site, it explains what AT&amp;T does. That's how I look at it, if there's only one call left, FirstNet's gonna get it, FirstNet
FirstNet is kind of like a government standard, but you're a government AT&amp;T standard.
We're doing, we we provide the network, well, they they didn't have the capacity, or we, so they contacted AT&amp;T to provide that. You know, we did have some comments, I I think all of the comments are shared with
All the comments are shared with the board members, all the comments are shared with the We had comments from sewer, police, fire, and IT, all supported the application. We had a comment from conservation that the pole, replacement pole needs permitting. We had two comments in support, we had four comments recommending not. So those are all the comments that the board received.
We just provide some, we did provide some photographs, some photo simulations, I'm on the screen, yeah. It is loaded. Okay, so I've got the uh the photo simulation package up, or the two views, one off of each side of the pole, that's the existing facility. This will be the proposed facility, you see the antenna at the top, with the pad on the side, with the electric meter. And then from the other side. And again, I understand it's the pole that went replaced, so this is just a, this is a representation, uh
Yeah, make it twice.
Based on, based on our mind. So, I mean, just in summary, we have a pretty minimal impact, you know, two, you know, twenty-four inch antenna, uh walk along, equipment cabinet, which is, you know, the the beef of the network, that's how all the poles and all the data is connected back to the AT&amp;T network. Frankly, I mean, kind of small and transformed, it's, you know, on two poles down, and you can see one, two, three poles down. You know, there are two trains going on this end, so
Did you say they moved the pole off this side?
Yeah.
They did, so the pole is just behind
I gave you a picture of the current pole in Europe, yeah, I have a picture, but you showed it.
But I don't have the information.
I, you know, I sent it to a time, oh, so it's Steve, right, that tape was in another pole, like, that's it. Right, so, kind of what did he do?
It's all the asphalt.
So it's not chiasma, this is, this is the picture that I sent you all, the other material. So it's all, yes, so.
So if they're gonna remove the pole pole?
Yes.
Will we get you to make applications to some of the other poles?
What's that?
Can you make applications on some of those other poles?
Well, we can, well, like, here could be uh
No, I just want, I just want AT&amp;T.
Oh, yeah, yeah. They're not cheap, so
That's
That's the only one we're moving, right? I'm gonna move the next one down.
We're not moving any, but actually, we just replaced it, right, they replaced it, that's it. Well, I don't know if they have, you would know better than I if they have plans to do anything with
Well, I think they're only responding to your application.
I, yeah, because we have
That's why I said, can you make applications to some of the more
Look, I do know that conservation has had um a hearing um last week with a number of other poles, I don't believe any of them are in this area, but that for just replacement poles. So National, uh National Grid comes in fairly frequently to get more replacements.
And with that, I mean, that kind of ends our presentation, as I said, if you have questions for Don Hayes, uh
Yeah, can you speak to the structural analysis? I was, I'm struck by the fact that they're evaluating it thirty-nine miles per hour when
Well, that's, I mean, that's the code and the standard, so we're up to code, we're up to the standard, uh that's the standard laid out by National Grid. Uh we do have to satisfy the building code, which we do, and whatever analysis goes into that, we pass, I think it's a forty something percent.
So that thirty-nine mile per hour number is a building code standard?
I don't, it's a code standard for utility poles, I have no idea what it comes from, and I couldn't possibly explain what it is, we just have to We have to comply with the structural integrity pole.
Yeah, I'm struck by the fact that we get a much higher velocity winds.
I agree, I I saw the comments.
And it's probably not gonna be good for your, you know, first, first net thing that blows off the pole, right? So that's, that's why I'm wondering why the structural analysis is such a low wind speed.
No, and I don't know what gets back in it, but
Who knows? Somebody filed it, I think.
Well, we filed a report to show we comply, and
Yeah, I mean, who knows what the standards, we're there.
Mr. Ferrer, you don't ask your questions, if lines are buried underground
I'm sorry, what's that?
If the lines are buried underground, how can we get this?
We don't, if there's nothing attached to it. So, yeah, if these were all underground, we'd have, we'd be able to put a new pole, that would probably cause a little bit more angst. So if we're in an area where utilities are underground, we have to put in a new, find a new structure, put in a new pole, and write it away. And that's not, that's not gonna go well here in Nashville.
Okay, I was just wondering, I just
You could, you could attach to a building down on Front Street.
We could, we could, anything tall.
Yeah, I was just curious, that would be better.
I'm just gonna bring up the standards, we can see, we've, we've seen buildings with cell towers attached to them.
Yeah.
So we, there's a, any private building down on Front Street could do it. Well, any building, of course, but
I think, I'd be happy to forward this, this is the standard, it's a, it's a deck here, and I can forward it to the brand board, so you can look at it.
Oh, we can get this. You forward it to the plan?
I I can. We received when I saw it back
Yeah, I just wanna know the source of the
That's it, right there, National, I think. Uh what was the other one?
So National Act of eighty ninety seven.
Yeah.
That's what they established, that's that.
Free cell phone, free cell. Look at that, look at that utility pole.
Well, I have the wheelchair, yes.
Uh well, I have a question about the emissions.
Okay.
So you're gonna talk about that?
Well, together, next.
Yeah, if you have, if you have questions, we filed a report that shows that we comply with this. And if you comply with the FCC emissions, you have that in the fancy little chart of the uh materials that Don Hayes has provided, but I do have Don here, Don, you with us?
Yes, yes, I am with us.
Don, can you just, can you just briefly explain how this complies and what you did to produce your report, and then if you have any questions?
Uh I can, yes, I hope everybody can hear me, okay?
Oh, yes.
Very well, very good, very well.
Excellent, excellent, so my name is Don Hayes, I'm a uh uh certified health physicist, and in case you're wondering what a health physicist does, it's a person that studies the field of radiation safety. Uh I've been in the field for uh, oh, over forty years now, it it may not show it because of my youth, but uh I have been doing this uh for a long time, and in fact, I uh served on many different committees, and I believe I included uh uh a brief outline in my CV uh with the report, but um uh in any event, I I am considered internationally as an expert in the field of uh radiation safety for uh what's known as non-ionizing radiation, which RF certainly is included. Uh for this particular uh facility, uh it it's not like uh I can go out and grab my meter and make some measurements and show that the site complies because the site's not built yet. And so what the FCC does, and and also, uh there are many different organizations, uh uh and in fact, many that I belong to, that uh come up with formulations which will uh attempt to predict the level of RF energy that one might expect for uh many different scenarios of emissions, whether it be from a FM radio tower uh or whether it be from a rooftop installation, or in this case, whether it be from a small cell uh installation. So the FCC gives us this information on how to do this, and and uh if I'm allowed to share my screen.
Yeah, go ahead, yes.
I think I'm sharing the right one. So uh it it's always embarrassing when you've got multiple screens and you find out you're sharing your, your kids' uh problems anyway. Uh so so here is uh is a copy of the report that I prepared. Uh I I gave a little brief outline of of what the limits mean. Uh and and the limits that I refer to are those published by the FCC, and they are assuming that the members of the human population that are being exposed are in fact unaware, that is, they don't know that they're being exposed, and in fact, they're not trained workers so that they understand how to uh control their exposure, and so these are known as general public limits, and they include everybody from, uh depending on your persuasion, the unborn child uh up to and including uh the seniors uh as people like myself. Uh so I did uh look at the particular location, and one of the things that I did do in my report was one of the things that I did do in my report was, uh, I did look at the topography. Uh, and if you look at the part that I highlighted on the screen, you're not gonna see highlight in your copy. Uh, just the fact that I did factor in the topography, that is, the change in elevation above average mean sea level, uh, for every location away from the pole. The calculations are based upon not only the environment in which the RF is being uh, propagated over, but also the amount of energy and then the type of antenna, and then how high above the ground the antenna is going to be. And so all of that information is here in this table, uh, as far as uh, the two different, what's known as remote radio heads, or RRH, or RRU, Remote Radio Unit. Uh, and each of those has a different frequency, and then within the sees are individual calls that are made and, uh, sections set aside for uh, emergency and nine-one-one overrides and all of that kind of stuff. And so, uh, here in fact is the power, that is the highest power that the transmitter can, uh, possibly emit. Here's the type of antenna. Uh, the antenna does exhibit what's called a gain, and if you allow me to spin forward really fast without getting anybody uh, too, uh, vertical related. Uh, i- if you look at the antenna patterns, and what we're talking about here is the fact that the antenna is not designed to be like a light bulb. In other words, it doesn't give off energy in all directions with a light bulb. Of course, it's visible light and in fact, a lot of infrared radiation, if it's an incandescent bulb, they get really hot. But if you look at the picture on the right-hand side, it looks like, uh, flower petals and so on. Basically, what that means is that the antennas are designed to not give so much energy way up on top because we're not providing coverage for phone, or for, uh, people in airplanes, uh, and, and to kind of squeeze it more out towards the sides. And so even though it seems to be petal-shaped, I, I assume that it's just a complete circle and that it's the highest possible, uh, e- even though it might not be. So then if you look at the report, a- and the way I look at a exposure analysis is that I don't want anybody, the, I don't care how expensive of a meter it is, I don't want anybody to go in after I do a prediction and find a number larger than I predict. It's not only embarrassing, it's wrong. Uh, that means I did something wrong. And so i- if you look at the report in the highlight, what I refer to as worst-case estimates, what that means is that every single transmitter is operating at full power. Hundred percent transmission, couldn't squeeze another drop out of it. Not only that, is that the antennas are at their maximum possible signal. Uh, and then in addition to that, I assume that the uh, earth is flat. A- and I know it sounds kind of funny, but i- if you're trying to get a signal out along ways, you have to con, uh, contend with the curvature of the earth. Well, I ignore that. I just assume that the earth is flat, which is the more conservative. And then the next thing I do, if that wasn't conservative enough, I know that the propagating signal has a chance to not be absorbed by the ground, but to be reflected by the ground. And in fact, I know that there's a remote chance, I've never seen it, I read about it, but there's a remote chance that it could add and reflect off like a mirror. And so, since that's the worst case, I assume that it's reflecting like a mirror everywhere it goes. This would drive people like Kevin and Vincent crazy because the signals wouldn't work the way they're supposed to, but I assume this is the worst condition. Uh, and then lastly, I assume that there is no degradation of signal due to anything in the air, whether it be excuse me, nitrogen molecules, which does happen, uh, foliage, weather, fog, uh, insects, birds, airplanes, anything. I'm sorry, I keep drinking here. Uh, so i- it's coffee, by the way, black coffee. So when I, when I take this total conservatism into account and do the calculations, uh, what you can see here is that I can get two different graphs. Uh, the first line on the graph i- in blue here is for the height of six feet above ground level, and we do that because that puts everything on a common scale so we can compare calculations, one tower versus another, and that's just up to the FCC. They say two meters, we do two meters or right about six feet. Now, it just so happens that in Massachusetts, the Department of Public Health has regulations one oh five CMR one twenty-two. Which, by the way, I was a member of the ad hoc committee that reviewed that back in nineteen eighties, uh, or nineteen ninety, I think, was the second review. Uh, they wanted to see levels at sixteen feet in addition to federal mandate was, which is six feet. And so that is why for this site, I included the sixteen feet above the ground. So I guess what I'm saying is, in conclusion, uh, no matter which way we look at it, what conservative approach we take, even if we take all the conservative approaches and smash them all together, uh, the site would still comply with both the Department of Public Health and the FCC, uh, regulations and limits for radio frequency exposure. And I will stop sharing.
So, um, couple of questions for you.
Sure.
You said it complies with both regulations. Is, is the yellow line both the vast state regulation and the FCC regulation, or is that the FCC limit?
Uh, that, that is an excellent question. It just so happens that the FCC and the Department of Public Health and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts agree on what the limits of exposure should be for members of the public and for RF workers. Again, the limits that I'm referring to are members of the public, and those are the same whether it be, uh, Massachusetts or federal.
Thank you. One, one other question I'd asked earlier, but, um, not sure I, you may have answered, but I'm not sure. Um, when you do this analysis, is this a standalone analysis? Do you consider the effects of other antennas, et cetera, other RF sources, if you will, in the area?
Uh, a- again, that's a, 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 a very astute question. Uh, this is considered a standalone uh, uh, type of analysis, and the reason why, in my judgment, that I looked at a, uh, standalone versus trying to uh, try to predict all the different signals that might be in the area, and if I can share one more time. Uh. Hold on. Did I get it right?
Then we'll turn to share.
I don't know anymore. Uh, I, I, I'm usually pretty careful of what I have on my screen. Uh, that, actually, the screen that I'm looking at has the top of Mount Mansfield in, uh, Stowe, Vermont. That's where I'm going, uh. Tuesday morning, every year I go out and do a series of uh, confirmatory measurements for, uh, Vermont Public Radio, and it just so happens Tuesday I'll be up there. Uh, so th- this is the copy of, uh, one oh five CMR one twenty-two. And even though the FCC does not dictate, um, when you should or when you have to, uh, take measurements of the existing fields. Uh, i- i- in fact, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts does do that, and if you look in their regulations, this was back before they were preempted by FCC as far as approvals, but i- if you look in, i- in the regulations for approvals under section E right in here, uh, it'll tell you that the approval of a site would be considered approved, uh, until measurements were made to confirm you were not exceeding the limits. That occurs at a standalone prediction of greater than one-third or thirty percent, and so i- if you look in here, it'll tell you that if it's greater than, uh, where is it? Right in here? Uh, I, I'm sorry, but the, the way the regulations are written.
Yeah, I'm not sure we should be reading mass regulations.
Yeah.
I, I guess maybe the question.
Yeah, so, so you can.
Um, is that, so we've identified this a- as a standalone analysis, but we know there's a second one coming relatively close, and we know there's a third one operating relatively close. And would you do an analysis that includes the effect of those other two? Are they too far away? What's, I'm just trying to understand the.
And what location?
Multiple antennas close together.
Well, well, certainly you'd have to, you'd have to pick a, a central location and say, what would it be here? It's, it's not like you can.
No, I'm talking about that, the, this analysis that you're doing right now. Would you consider the effect of an existing operating antenna nearby as well as the potential proposed second antenna nearby?
Okay, so wha- what I see, i- if I, I, I hope I'm showing it on the graph, so if, if I'm at the highest point at nine and a half percent, and if I move a hundred feet away, the, the contribution, I don't have the number outlined here, but i- it's right about three percent, and so if I have another pole that's similar, I, I can't designate which carrier is doing which thing, but if it's very similar, uh, then the three percent, and if it's a hundred feet away, they do three percent, the three percent and the three percent are additive linearly, so that would be six percent. It's still less than the nine percent. You, you see?
So it's, it's, it drop, the effect drops off pretty quickly for distance, is what you're saying?
Oh, oh, absolutely, that.
Okay.
That's for a reason.
That's really what I was trying to understand.
Yeah, it, it's for, it's for a reason, and, and it's because you the, the weakest link in any communication system is the handheld device. So we, you know, we can certainly make handheld devices up to ten watts like the old bag phones used to be. Uh, and then you could have one tower in town and you're done. E- e- except you're gonna overexpose anybody that uses it, like tremendously. And, and so the limit is how much the user can be exposed because of the handset. Th- that's the real limit that we have to watch out for.
Ask you there.
Yeah.
I think I get your initial answer.
Uh, so, so what I'm saying is that we're, we're not gonna build cell phones that are so powerful that we're going to reduce the number of cell towers needed.
No, I get that. I, I'm really talking about your worst case level of emissions for this particular location, and whether it's materially impacted by having other antenna nearby, and I think what I hear you say is outside like a hundred feet, there's minimal impact from those others.
So the, the best thing I could, I could compare that to would be i- if, if we were to have what's known as a macro site, l- let's say we had a, uh, a- and I've seen these, a hundred-foot pole that has all three carriers on it. Uh, that's about as close as you can get to having them all together in one spot because they're ten feet apart vertically. And in those situations, uh, I, again, I've made numerous measurements. I know I've been making measurements around uh, a, a, a cell tower in, in, um, Foxborough annually for thirty-three years, and so, uh, e- even with those types of installations, you're not gonna see anywhere near nine percent. You're just not going to get the, the network driven to that capacity. AT&amp;T wants you to, but i- it's never going to get there.
I'm all set, and you're just, yeah.
Nothing else, right?
So this is a poll here, and if anybody would like to speak.
Um, I, I just had a couple of other questions, so, uh. You're, you finally asked, had a section about relief requested, or are there specific waivers you're asking for?
No, relief requested, just from the viola, we need special permit, and they just site plan and review.
You're not asking for waivers on anything?
Uh, I get, I mean, we think our plan is sufficient, so when you say.
No, that's a good question. I just, I didn't understand.
It's the, it's, it's the zone of relief request.
They don't need, they're not asking for the waivers. They need.
There is.
They need the site plan, uh, maybe site plan or do a special permit.
Right. We're not waiting for any.
We're not waiting for anything.
Okay. Great, if you'd like.
I'm all right. So, and is anybody in the public who would like to speak? Uh, please do, and we, uh, state your name. Could you come up here to speak at the light show, please? And state your name and your address, please.
Hi, I'm Danielle Wolf. I live on Iberical Road, um, directly across the street from the pole. Um, I was here last time, um, these folks were here to install a pole at Ninety Bridge. Um, we were also opposed to that. It was very close to my neighbors. This new location is approximately two hundred, two hundred feet from the one that they put through their application on, um, last summer. Um, I had some back and forth, uh, with Ms. Joseph, um, about the location of, um, this equipment. I first would like to say that we, my husband and I do not oppose this type of equipment. We understand there's a need in the area to improve cellphone coverage, um, and, and we, we, we are supportive. Our issue here is location. Um, and particularly, um, the concern for us is the beach dedication. Um, I think it is now understood that National Bridge moved forward and replaced the pole without, um, notifying conservation that they were going to do that, and as such, did not. And as such, did not have an order of conditions in place when they were putting in the new pole. The new pole, every other pole on Jericho Road, as we all know, is in the sidewalk. I don't know why, I am assuming it's because they don't belong in the beach. So this one now is. And my request is that the board here pause and find out through an environmental impact study, whether or not it is appropriate for this type of equipment to be located over beach vegetation, which serves to prevent storm surge in the bay from coming over into Jericho Road and flooding our holes. I do believe that the last time we were here, we had asked AT&amp;T to consider other poles along Jericho Road, particularly by the yacht club and by the community building, as well as out at the lighthouse. And none of those poles, particularly on a block the other day, I was looking at poles 13 and 15 and 18 and 20, those were not part of the application that they presented to you as poles that had been evaluated as possible locations. I understand AT&amp;T is in the business of making money. And I understand it's their responsibility to try and implement their projects in a cost-effective manner. However, my question to them is, would they achieve the coverage that they're looking for or potentially even additional coverage by identifying locations not in a conservation area with two units? I know right now they only want to do one here and they want to do one in the harbor. But if there was to be a pause and identifying other poles, we can clearly see National Bridge doesn't have a problem changing poles out when they are asked to rather quickly. We watched the project occur, it happened on July 15th, was the date the pole was pulled, the new pole was installed. And I communicated very quickly with Ms. Joseph. And at that point, AT&amp;T had not filed a permit, had not filed a request to come before planning. So the pole was in, that was done. And, you know, we feel like National Bridge is, this is a, this is a financial arrangement for the, for National Bridge and AT&amp;T. So that was the motivating factor by which they chose to replace the pole. Lastly, I would just, you know, I trust you will carefully consider this. And, you know, the long-term environmental impacts that could exist over at the beach. Again, I really, you know, we appreciate it, I mean, for additional cellphone coverage. We would just prefer that alternative locations could be determined that are not within a protected conservation area. One other note about New Zand Beach. When we first moved into our home, which has been in the family since the 1950s, the location has been. New Zand Beach, while beautiful, the seagrass was littered with canoes and kayaks. And the Conservation Board took great care to ensure that all of those, all the watercraft was removed. And in the three years since that was done, we have seen a dramatic change in the condition of the seagrass at New Zand Beach. It's lush, it's thick, and it's supporting, it's, that vegetation is doing what it's supposed to be doing now. And it's not being suppressed. I just don't think that we know if this equipment would have an adverse effect in this area. And I think we should be very cautious before proceeding.
Well, first of all, I don't know that that is a protected conservation area.
I did have a conversation with the conservation agent and she indicated that they have been in action now and that her concern is only the actual pole location. That is the only concern of the conservation agent. But, you know, they are going to have to file something and they're working out what they're filing with conservation. But the vegetation is not, the conservation is not concerned with what's on the pole. Conservation is concerned with the pole in the ground. And if I may add to that piece, this, looking at this picture, that pole looks to be about 12 inches from the pavement. And what I see to the left of it is a moring bench that is taking up far more room.
Well, I didn't put it there, but I would also argue it shouldn't, that shouldn't be there either.
Pole that is approximately this big around.
I'm not concerned with the pole, Ms. Vermont. I'm concerned with, with the equipment being attached to the pole. I am concerned with the emissions, any sort of heat that would be coming up. I don't know. And I think that caution should be, should, I Well, that's fine. And you're certainly entitled to that. But you are not an environmentalist or somebody that's, that would know necessarily if that's the case. What I'm asking for here is to take a pause and so that this can be looked into a little bit further. I also had a conversation with Jennifer Smith in conservation. And while she did say that they are focused at the moment on a pole, my understanding with her is that there is no law right now that she can use to do any sort of enforcement about this equipment. And so she said she has concerns about the equipment, but she has no mechanism at her disposal right now to intervene. That is what she said to me. That is what she said to me.
That is what, that is any way, shape or form is what she said.
She had a different conversation with me. So
I would tell you that I am entitled by Urban and he said he was prepared here.
Yes.
And I took extensive research. I can read off on this stuff. And I can tell you that I went specifically to those questions about seagrass, fish, or something like that. I couldn't find anything that came from emissions of this stuff that maybe affects that or electric rights. Something suppresses growth, suppresses, you know, who recognize it suppresses how they make, where they lay their eggs. I couldn't find anything about electricity in this type of box. So I, I didn't know where, and we had a booking, so don't, don't assume that we have a diet of homework for last year. So I cannot provide personally anything that may affect that. If I tell you that we did, then we would expect to come here and have a review of this on purpose. We, we are here to protect the citizens in charge. We're not here to make any kind of deals with anybody, let alone the yet this for the health and safety standpoint, or just for the grass, which I have to stand. But right now, we don't have a process or a way to help you prosecute that. We don't. And when we do, a method that does it will be done.
Okay, my last two points, there was some discussion about 100, 100 feet, you know, drop off with emissions. And I would just, just like to make clear that 100 feet southeast and west is all beach. It's all vegetation. 100 feet to the north is my home. Less than 100 feet is my home. And on the other side, less than 100 feet is the home of Bill and Laura Winslow, who are on vacation and not be here. So my, my home also sits, and, and my kids live there. And we also have the same concern that the residents of Bay Ridge had back in the mid. Lastly, something that's just brought up by Mr. Pritchard about, which gives me some concern is that this equipment box is only rated for 39 mile per hour winds. So we all know the wind blows a lot harder than that down in Sitchwick Harbor. And I don't want to see such a piece of equipment flying at my house. So I would appreciate some, some investigation into, you know, ensuring that should you approve this, that AT&amp;T is going to ensure that it can withstand more than 30 mile, 39 mile per hour winds. Because, I mean, that's, that's not even an arrest really, no, so. So thank you for your time.
Could I ask, we have Donald Post. He's, I guess, still on the line. Can he provide any input on the impact of RF on vegetation? Or is it strictly people analysis that you do?
That's a outstanding question. If you read the Telecommunications Act of 1996 through the FCC.
Don't make me do that. That's why I'm asking you.
Well, I'll just boil it down. The, the table that they've referenced is called Environmental Effects. And so it includes everything that would be living in the environment.
So the standard that is set is based upon that? So it's not just humans?
Well, the, the standards are certainly based upon human exposure. But in the reference, it's called Environmental Effects. And so by reference, it's not just strictly limited to human exposure. Those are the field levels I'm referring to.
So you, have you been involved in any analysis that tried to determine that effect on vegetation?
No.
Is there any investigation into that?
Oh, yes.
All right. Thank you.
I'm all set.
Can I ask one question? As far as this application, doesn't meet all FCC standards?
I can only speak to the FCC standards for hu, for human exposure and then to reference environmental effects. I, I can't reference to the actual equipment and/or the use of the equipment. That would be up to AT&amp;T. I'm a independent consultant.
I can answer, yes. Sure, I just want to take a moment of your time just to make a couple of points. First point is that the initial application is broken. And the distance between the initial application, which was withdrawn, and the new application, as my wife indicated, is about 200 feet. So why would we, the citizens of the town and members of the community, think that this is an appropriate location? No, it's the most cost-effective location most likely for AT&amp;T. That's point number one. Point number two is, we did appear and we did propose and ask for studies to be done, as my wife indicated, at the community center, which is less obtrusive, as well as the yacht club. And the final point is, Mike, Mike pointed out that the two lowest points in the, in the harbor area are around Rebecca and Lighthouse Road. Why aren't we exploring opportunities to put the equipment in the lowest area that will benefit police and fire? And as a former volunteer fireman, that's very near and dear to my heart. Thirdly, if there is an opportunity to put it out, put it out close to Rebecca and Lighthouse, maybe on the Lighthouse, maybe it's a revenue share for the town. We need to consider those things as well. Appreciate your time. I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
So I did respond quickly. We moved this pole because of his opposition to the other pole. Would be more than happy if you go back to 9 Bay Ridge, because
Did you look at the other locations?
We did, well, you'll see that, number one, they're outside of search area. Two, we had analyzed these previously, but Kevin did take a look at the coverage. The coverage is not as good as it is. The coverage is not as good as 9 Bay Ridge to begin with, but at 109 Jericho, we punch up the, you know, slides.
But you looked at the yacht club?
Just, I want to pull up a slide.
So I believe I shared this last time we were here, did we did? So these are a number of the locations we asked to take a look at. And so this one is at at Boat End. And let me start with, the screen outline is what we, what the coverage from Bay Ridge would have given us. So that's what I, you know, just wanted to put that there so you can see it. So this is what the coverage we were hoping would achieve. And then we went through and showed what each location would provide as an alternative.
So the red circle one is what represents that?
Yeah, so that's a plot. That's what that location did.
So that's Boat End 44, Circle and Rev.
Correct, yeah. Yacht Club?
Where's the, where's, so go back, is that the yacht club?
That's the yacht club.
And so can you pull up one year proposal and the other as I compare them?
So biggest impact is right up in this neighborhood. That would be, as you can see, it's not covered well here. But with both the Bay Ridge and Jericho, Bay Ridge is a little bit better, but it fills in that area. I don't think I'm going to be able to switch like that. I'm going to have to share and reload.
What about the poles that Mr. Wolf mentioned, 13, 15, 18 and 20? We don't know, I don't know what goes up.
I thought those were the yacht club and the community.
18 and 20 are near the yacht club, then 13 and 15 are near the community.
Yeah, so those are representative of the yacht club and the
Can you send me these two slides?
I will.
And I just add one more in regards to Mr. Wolf's question about somewhere near the lighthouse. Lighthouse or perhaps on the lighthouse. Moving to the board here, is that something we considered before or was discussed last year?
I think the question wasn't asked about more than that on my head. But I don't remember the answer to that. It's been a while. I also have other unrelated projects impacting the lighthouse. And it was a very delicate conversation because the lighthouse is a historic building and we have to be very careful what can get attached to it. I was trying to get small cameras and can imagine the cell attachment to one of them would be okay, especially after multiple billion dollar turnover.
Yeah, let me explain, I mean, we're here in the public right of that. So we can talk about, you know, we can say that, well, it's financial, but we're allowed to be in the public right of that. If we use private property, that's a whole different situation. With leasing, having landlord, for pound property, that would have to be another key process. We're entitled to use the right of way, just like the electric company and the KFC company, et cetera. And, you know, just go back of the alternatives. This move for us is costly from 9 Bay Ridge to 109 Jericho. So the idea that, gee, this was, this was a good thing to do for us, this is a loser for us. We spent, we spent thousands to move this location because this is what the neighborhood wanted. This is what would push us. So now to, you know, bring back, push us further away outside our circle. I mean, at some point, you have to make a decision to move on. It's not having a big impact.
I think that's, that's not quite stating conclusions at the end. Well, because I think we identified a bunch of potential locations that you could look at here, right? Including the all the other, right?
All the ones in the red circle, we look at them, each one.
So is the one out on the point, is that done?
Yeah.
And what did that look like? Because that's kind of, that would be kind of the lighthouse up there.
But so if I may for a second, we have so, such a big pole and the whole, along the whole front stream area that if you put it up by the that if you put it up by the lighthouse, your only service could have one little area.
Yeah, I just wanna see what they analyze.
Yes, please.
So Terri's comment about it was opposition in the neighborhood. Jericho and Bay Ridge is still the neighbor. It's two hundred feet away. It's a pointless point there, you mean. It's still the neighborhood of Bay Ridge and Jericho.
Can you get it?
Just gotta think, I don't have to figure out the last application. You wanna wait up?
Well, you can just pass.
Alright. I'll send it to you, but it's, it's from our, it's a major thing.
Can't think of any talk about it. I need to see the record.
The most, it's one of the poles that weren't they considered are junctions or they have transformers on. It, it seems to me, you said the last term, that why these poles were just not viable because they got stuck on already.
Right, correct. So and we, and that's that alternative site analysis we did with the red circle.
Just for the record, thirteen, fifteen, eighteen, twenty did not have transformers on them. I, I walked the whole street just, just to be sure, and I, I photographed all of them.
And they don't work for us. They, not only do they have to be available, they need they need to work for AT&amp;T's network, and they have to be available, the ones in the red circle, who are not available for all the reasons we described. We just presented why these. I, we didn't look at specific poles. We're asked to look at areas. We looked at those areas, the yacht club and including you said.
Now, this is a very difficult situation. Now, this whole thing is difficult. It is very difficult. And we can please some of the people sometimes. We have, we can please some people sometimes, and a lot of people not at all. The reality is, there coverage of stuff is needed. It is needed. And I understand the most concerned. I understand that it's just moving it two hundred feet away in the neighborhood. I am not sure that putting this off anyone is going to change a thing. It is unfortunately, as I said, it's difficult. And not everybody is going to be pleased, and people will, we can't. There's no way we can please everyone. And it's all about coverage. It's all about public safety. All of the departments in this town have agreed to like, think that it's a good thing. Therefore, I have to say that I would support this application for those reasons. We need it.
May I throw the discussion? Well, the board, the board has to decide if you want to move ahead with the draft motion that I've prepared, or if you want to continue this to another night. And if you want to continue this, you have to be very clear about the direction of the specific information that's not in the application that we wanna see. You've heard that the application meets the FCC standards. Nothing's gonna change that I can see. I really can't. I'd like to see a draft decision.
Like this still yet, I, I think getting, maybe just getting a draft decision going is, well, I mean, I would like to see feedback on structural analysis, what may end up being the condition.
Well, you, you can make it a condition that we comply. Now, what the thirty-nine miles an hour relates to, it's not within our juris-, your jurisdiction, so not within mine. We have to show it complies. The thirty-nine, thirty-nine.
This is a special permit.
Yep, and, but it's not a building permit.
This is a special permit, and we can ask for additional information. So what I'm asking for is to tell us where the thirty-nine mile requirement came from and give us the reference.
I, I, well, let's continue because I showed it.
No, you just showed the cover, the natural electric.
Well, I'll show, well, we have the whole thing with it.
Okay, send me the actual, send us the actual reference.
Well, you have the reference in our report. It was done by our engineer.
No, and they're still.
You're questioning whether the thirty-nine is adequate, not whether we need the standard. Is that a?
I'm, I'm questioning whether you're doing the appropriate analysis.
There you go.
That, you're just getting it?
But, but, no, this is a draft, this is a draft motion.
So this is, where is this in our analysis? This was in our analysis.
True.
This was in our back.
It wasn't. You asked for it this evening. I just punched, I showed you the cover sheet.
Are you gonna send this to?
I had already said I would send it to you, number one. Number two, this is the standard upon which it was.
I get that. I'm not.
Why, I don't think, I'm not sure you do, so I don't.
No, I didn't.
Okay.
I did.
This will be.
Do I think that is appropriate here? That's the question.
Right, but we, we, I wanna be clear, we comply with the code. So we can argue whether it should be thirty-nine, whether it should be two hundred or eighty. But.
I, I'd grant it shouldn't be too long.
But I don't know whether it should be thirty-nine. I don't think you do either, so.
Well, then I asked the question.
Yep, I gave you four, and this will be.
I'm not gonna ask the question with you. Ask others.
I'm going to make the following findings of fact concerning installation of small cell equipment on a replacement utility pole twenty-four in the right of way across from Jericho Road. One, on July seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, new senior wireless PCS LLC, DBA as AT&amp;T, upon a special permit, major cycling review for installation of a small cell unit on a replacement utility pole number twenty-four within the public right of way across from one oh nine Jericho Road under section seven thirty point four, section seven thirty point two A and B, paragraphs one, three, and five, section seven seventy and section nine seventy of the City of Zoning Bylaw. Two, the existing pole and a new replacement pole are in the public right of way of Jericho Road across from number one oh nine, which is located in R three residential zoning district. Three, the applicant has submitted a letter from National Grid, which indicates they have entered into a full attachment agreement and consent to file for permits to AT&amp;T to install, attach, maintain, repair, upgrade, and use wireless communication and occurrences on certain utility poles subject to their agreement, including initial installation on ongoing maintenance and upgrades or replacements of said equipment. For the proposed installation location of the small cell antenna will be on a pole that replaces the existing pole in this location. The replacement pole is thirty-eight feet six inches. The existing pole is thirty-three feet. The five, the application indicates that small cell units allow AT&amp;T to strategically install antennas in high-vehicular locations while improving wireless performance and while mitigating visual impacts through the installation of the as-proposed small cell antenna system. Six, according to certification in the radio frequency board, proposed AT&amp;T small cells, City of Zoning, City of Mass, dated June seventh, twenty twenty-four, Kevin Moore, radio frequency engineer for AT&amp;T's small cell configuration, was chosen to achieve the best balance between coverage and capacity objectives while minimizing aesthetic impact on the town of Citywood while complying with applicable laws and regulations. The certification indicates the low-power facility will meet all applicable FCC regulations and improve wireless communication services in areas near the site and connecting my map road sites. Seven, the small cell unit will consist of a fourteen point five inch diameter by twenty-four inch high cylindrical antenna mounted on a replacement pole with associated wires, cables, dipper converter, and electrical meter as depicted on the plans submitted with the application. A replacement forty-five foot pole will be installed with wholly small cell antenna. The top of the new pole will be thirty-eight on six inches in height. AGL, and the small cell antenna will be mounted on top of that total height of the replacement pole with an antenna of forty-one feet six inches B AGL. The antenna is less than ten feet in height and meets the requirements of section seven thirty point four and seven thirty point two A of the City of Zoning Bylaw. An equipment cabinet twenty-four inches wide and twenty inches deep and forty-eight inches wide will be mounted on the utility pole at about eleven and a half feet AGL. Two, the low-power facilities will comply with all applicable FCC regulations regarding exposure to RF emissions and other matters. Three, the proposed facility is feasible, appropriate, and will include wireless communication services surrounding the area. C, letter from Edward D. Pari, junior esquire of Brown, Ridenick, LLP, detailing the request for small or special permit and major cycling review for small cell wireless communication antenna facility on a replacement utility pole in the public right of way, the pole number twenty-four across from one oh nine Jericho Road, including compliance with required standards. D, the applicant provided coverage maps, current AT&amp;T coverage in City of Zoning and proposed coverage near City of Zoning, and provided an interpretation of such maps that they testify and demonstrate a significant need for the proposed antenna. E, the applicant provided a site selection analysis, full feasibility assessment, Jericho Road across from one oh nine, City of Mass, CRAN, RCTV, SSHR, O two, supporting location for the proposed small cell facility. F, the applicant provided a structural analysis reported by Center Line dated June twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. G, the applicant provided a report by radiation specialist Donald L. Hayes, junior, C H D, regarding the installation and omnidirected canister antenna and associated equipment comprised a small cell W, PWS facility to be mounted on a replacement utility pole in City of Massachusetts. This information meets the requirements of section seven thirty point four of of the City of Zoning Bylaw. Eleven. A, AT&amp;T has provided information that the replacement pole is structurally sound and capable of supporting the loads created by the antenna as indicated in section seven thirty point two B one of the zoning bylaw. The plan shows that the replacement utility pole and proposed equipment shall comply with standards specified in applicable industry state and federal codes. Nine, the applicant indicates that the proposed antenna shall be neutral, non-reflective color, and AT&amp;T will work with the board on a suitable color. This only the requirement that the antenna be painted or colored to blend with the structure. Huge works for many. This meets the standard through section seven thirty point two B three of the City of Zoning Bylaw requiring antenna mounted on a structure shall be colored or painted to blend with the structure. Ten, the applicant has admitted the following evidence to support demonstra-, uh, the demonstration illustration for the need for the antenna to provide significant improvement in network coverage and capacity. A, applicants FCC licensed to operate. B, a radio frequency report proposed AT&amp;T small cell facility, City of Zoning Mass, dated June seventh, twenty twenty-four, with a certification for Kevin Moore, radio frequency engineer stating the location and configuration were chosen to achieve optimal balance between meeting coverage and capacity objectives and minimizing the aesthetic impact on the town of Citywood while complying with all applicable FCC regulations. Eleven. The application meets section seven seven point six of the City of Zoning Bylaw, section A through J, as one, the proposed installation of small cell pole attachments will enable a more reliable and improved wireless service in Citywood, addressing coverage and capacity network requirements in the least intrusive way we can. Two, the small cell equipment has been cited and des-, and designed to minimize visibility for neighboring residents and streets, and it will not trap from the visual appearance of a surrounding neighborhood. Three, the small cell attachment will be mounted on a replacement of existing unmanned utility pole and will have no impact on traffic safety or access and will not produce unreasonable noise, smoke, overs, waste, or glare. Four, there will be no ground equipment, no pole mounting equipment will obstruct public way, and electric and fiber will be obtained from existing service. Five, there is no need for sewage disposal, or water use, or storm drainage, and does not require fire or police protection as it has its own monitoring equipment. Six, there is no cap and fill of destruction of other features, including trees. And seven, the obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations is minimized by installing, as proposed and approved herein, small cell equipment on a replacement pole. Twelve, the applicant meets the requirements of the City of Zoning Bylaw, section seven thirty point four, section seven seventy, for a wireless communication antenna on a utility pole.
Is there a second for discussion? Second, discussion. So I'm sorry, is the pole in or not?
It is in.
Is the, is the, are the, yeah, it's not, 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 not. Wires going to that pole or is just all same?
Why?
For what? It's not going to, even poling. Well, it's still on your pole. It's, the wires are still on the old pole. All that does is put the pole in. I, I went to, okay, so then you don't.
It's the wires. They're not all removed, but some of them.
Okay, but not all of them removed yet. I got that, just think, I, I got those.
Yeah, wherever we said it's we located, you know, in like, uh, less than four or whatever, skin change.
But everything's gonna be on the replacement pole. In the end, everything's gonna be on the replacement pole, and the old pole goes away. Yeah, this, this, this. Which one? It is a
Unfortunate, as proposed in the petition, uh, the small cell antenna will be on the pole that has been existing, the, the new pole. It's already existing pole, literally.
Right, but so it's gonna be on the pole that replaces the existing pole.
That has replaced.
That replaced.
Long enough.
That, that is, okay, I got you.
I had one on eleven five about the monitoring. So I saw the note from our police, like, the, uh, asking we need to monitor this once or twice.
Well, that's in the conditions.
So that's already, that's part of the conditions? Okay, so I'm just curious about, like, we need to put that in here or something?
The condition that says they have to keep everything proper working, right?
Okay, so that's part of what you get, right?
That'll be the second part of the decision.
Got it, thank you.
This is the fact, that we're gonna do this. So seven has amended. Second. Oh, amended, I, I.
I did.
Decision, a motion was duly made and seconded to approve special permit and major site plan review for the installation of small cell equipment. On the replacement utility pole twenty four in the right of way across from one oh nine Jericho Road with the following. Conditions. One, except for any changes noted there to meet these conditions, any construction shall conform to the plans entitled AT&amp;T site ID. CRAN, RCTV, SSHR, O two, one nine Jericho Road across situ. Sheets. T dash one, C dash one, A dash one, A dash two and A dash three revised dated six eleven twenty four. By Center Line Communications of Western Jordan Mass and stamped by Derek J Research, E E. Two, the replacement pole with the small cell unit installed shall not exceed the height. Of forty one feet, six inches above ground level. The color of the small cell unit antenna shall be brown to better match the replacement color, placement pole color. Three, the proposed cell facility includes installing one cylindrical antenna of fourteen point five. Feet, nine, giant, uh. It's fourteen point five, no fourteen point five inches diameter and twenty four inches at a top height of forty one feet, six inches above ground level. One equipment cabinet twenty four inches wide by twenty inches deep and forty eight inches tall, mounted of eleven and a half feet above ground level. With associates, associates with wires, cables, dipper converter and electrical meter to a thirty eight foot six inch tall above ground level. Replacement pole forty five feet long, six feet, six inches of which is buried. To replace the existing utility pole as is detailed in the graphics referenced in item one above. For the applicant shall maintain the small cell intensive antenna system in good working order and appearance appearance. Five, pursuant to FCC licensing, the applicant is required to ensure that at all times, all radio equipment operated at the proposed communication facility. Results in radio frequency exposure levels complying with all applicable FCC requirements. An annual statement of compliance shall be submitted by AT&amp;T to the planning board by June thirtieth of each year. Six, all antennas and pertinent equipment not in use for a period of six months or more shall be removed from a replacement pole at the owner's. Slash operators expense. Seven, installation of the antenna and associated equipment shall not begin Friday, seven, eight and weekdays and may begin on Saturdays. And shall cease no later than seven P M or sunset, whichever is earlier, no construction shall take place on Sundays or Limo, Pedro, holidays. Construction includes idle vehicles, delivery of materials to the location and all other construction activities. Eight, any excavation down a situation right of way shall be done according to town standards and a street opening permit will be required by the city T W. Any damage done to property during installation must be repaired to its original condition. Nine, subject to applicable federal law, the applicant shall comply with all applicable requirements. Of the select board, building department, board health, department of fireworks, fire department, water department conservation commission, planning board and other town agencies. Ten, the planning board may require an onsite inspection for performance to be approved plans in these conditions prior to operation of the small cell unit. Eleven, the special permit and major site plan review shall last within two years from the date of this issuance. Excuse me, unless substantial use or construction has commenced prior to that time. Twelve, the town of situ reserves the right to review compliance with this approval and associate associated conditions at any time. Thirteen, subject to applicable federal law, the applicant shall provide a fourteen day notice planning board for any proposed. Upgrade or changes for the small cell antenna that is approved herein. Such notice shall include a submittal of the impacts and mitigation of those changes, including but not limited to any changes to visual impact. Of structure, antenna, of selection, antenna system as required in accordance with section seven thirty four four. Such changes can be reviewed and approved by the town planner or at the discretion of the board, may require a meeting with the planning board. Fourteen, the applicant shall provide a forty eight hour notice of small cell antenna installation to the planning board office. Fifteen, the existing pole in the middle of the walk shall be removed prior to activation of the small cell.
Just there's seconds or just.
Karen, we should have thought of it here. She put something that if we find that it becomes detrimental, then we will. Or two.
Do you?
At the time of the meetings. Well, we find itself that it integrates to that turtles on a bit of a. I don't think people, I wouldn't do that. No. I, I try, as long as. I mean. Where, they're saying complies with FCC.
Okay.
That's all we have to be, that's all we have to be concerned about, doesn't comply with FCC regulations.
It also to never done.
That's the.
Yeah. The applicant shall comply with all of the board requirements and um conservation is in here, so they got to.
Yeah, it's all before make sure that they know that that would hurt.
Yeah, so I would like to add a second.
Yes, number sixteen.
That says prior to. commencement of installation, the applicant shall have reviewed. The. Um. The integrity of the system at. Higher wind loads, so let's call it, you know, whatever the wind loads in situation should be. Such that none of the appurtenances on the, on the pole. Will be, will off, will, will fall off during extreme weather events.
Take, why do you want your. And then the applicant's.
I, I, I am, I, I'm gonna make a point, you should check down with town council because that's a building. It's like designing, it's like building a residential house.
Well, we can, we can wait, we can wait and you can respond to us and we. I think we can just put this away and, and.
Can you send me what your verbiage that you just rattled off?
Sure.
I mean, because I didn't get it all. I mean, I can ask town council if you want. Um. If that's.
I'll send it to you.
If it's legal to play.
Or we can just wait, you can just put this all on hold.
No, I don't want to come home.
So.
I really don't.
So then I, I'm saying I think we should add something in here on this. We're talking about a structure, we're talking about small cell antenna systems in good working order appearance. We're talking about the major justification for this thing is first responder communication. I think we should have something in here on that.
I have to say that if the structure isn't one of that, I think in my opinion, the pole. It, it, it's the pole and if you have a one hundred mile an hour wind. That pole is going over and it's going to take everything with it. That's what's going to happen.
Well, why don't we ask.
That's not when this happened in nor'easters in, in situ. What has taken power out are trees, not poles.
Trees, there's no trees around this, so, so, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, the pole's not gonna, should not fall down, they should have analyzed it for that, but it should not fall down.
Probably should not.
But nothing should be stripped off it either if we're relying on it for, you know, first responder.
To prioritize.
Okay, so, yes.
So. So just, just a, I don't know, something that stands out to me is kind of obvious is that they're spending many thousands of dollars putting equipment on the pole. It's their best interest to make sure it doesn't fall off, do you think that they have been doing everything possible to make sure they don't lose their.
I would think, well, I, I would think exactly that and I would think they could demonstrate that to us quite easily, but it appears not, appears they don't want to.
And they're.
But I think we should insist.
Because they're citing rules and regulations that they're bound to and that they're required to.
Those are the minimum, right, those are the minimum, my, what I'm really saying is if these are the criteria and the justification. For this installation, then they should be able to demonstrate that and if you say they're, they wouldn't be spending this money. In, in a way that that wouldn't be true, then that's fine, just demonstrate, that's all I'm asking, I'm not asking to do anything else.
All right, Karen. We have sixteen. And go forward and the applicant can take it all. I mean, I'd like to see this done tonight, I really would.
If, if you're asking them to try, engineer, if, if, if you're asking them to hire an engineer to do it all and. I don't know, at what point do they say enough to spend enough money below? Because they're, they're, they're applying, they're, I. I'm, I'm speaking in, in an effort to get better cell signal and that. I don't care if it takes team time, I don't care if it's Verizon sitting here, I've got nothing, no, no vested interest uh uh with making team here, other than uh better cell coverage. I don't want to see them walk away because you're asking to hire an engineer to make some study up that, that is already made.
It's already made in some study, this is not esoteric analysis, right?
The, the structural is pretty, it's a pretty regular stuff and.
The structural is a professional. You know, a professional engineer ought to be able to do this pretty quick, right, so I don't think we're asking for anything.
They're meeting the standards, right, they're meeting the standards.
They're meeting minimum standards, we're asking them to be more protective than that. And we're asking them because you indicated that this was important, first responders. Where's most of our first responders in the middle?
Did we ask Verizon during time?
They're out there, right?
Did we ask Verizon to do this when they put their small cell attachment on the, on tower place?
I don't know, I didn't, I don't approve that, so I'll make sure you make things different, doesn't matter, I'm asking them the question, if they can answer the question, they can answer the question.
Well, the answer to the question is the structural was to the pole.
Yeah, but the structural is still only thirty nine miles an hour.
But, but you, but, but you let me. But that's the code, you can't say you have to design your house because you're a certain person or you're a certain company to be above the code, that's not your job. It's the building fish's job.
You're, you're telling me the justification for this is in large part for our first responders, right?
If you want, no, 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 that's not true, that's a misrepresentation of what we.
Well, that's what people said here today. So if you're telling you guys.
The, the major ju- the major justification is for our first responders, is that we are sending?
That's what you, that's, I think that's what I heard Karen saying here.
It's providing AT&amp;T coverage.
No, it's for better, better coverage, it's, we have, we're a customer and we want better coverage as a customer.
You, you're just going back of what you said earlier, that, that the primary support group was, was the police.
Yeah, because we want better coverage, because we want better coverage as a customer of AT&amp;T, absolutely.
Fire. And they want first, first net to work when they're out there responding.
It, yeah, and if, if first that's not working, the consumer grade cellular, which is likely going to be on a small cell site, it's all going to be connected.
I.
This, this.
I don't, I don't, I'm not going to vote tonight, I think I vote this forward.
How does this actually connect to the pole?
It's bolted, the equipment's bolted, the mounting bracket's there. You can certainly tell, I mean, I put throughout the application, we have to comply with the code, make that statement, you can't change the code, I'm sorry, you can't do that.
It's not changing, I'm asking, I'm asking you to do a particular analysis.
You are changing. There's no analysis that, we told you it's supplies.
I'm, I'm asking you to tell me.
That, that's, that's what we have to do.
I am asking you to tell me that this system will not become a flying object in a, in a nor'easter.
Every, everything becomes a flying object, people's lawn currents become flying.
Yes, it does, I disagree with you.
It does not, you can.
Well, all I'm suggesting is.
If everything becomes a flying object and buildings are flying down in nor'easters and that doesn't have any.
Right. Do you have a question?
Yeah, right, do you want to have any evidence that can tell us as we go up about this coast, we have these massive storms that use these up to higher up.
Of course, the poles tip over.
Yeah, right.
Houses blow over, roofs blow over, you don't reset the roof at the planning board for special permit. You don't say, I want the house built to be three hundred miles an hour, you can't do it.
So what?
All I'm suggesting is if you play, if you play, but, but you're asking me for something above the code, so I want to.
I'm asking you.
I gave you the code, gave you the code, you can have to go into official, just, just call it, show it to you on the screen, I just.
Should we wait till we can look at the code?
No. You're very, it's, it, Karen has it, she can vote for it. If I may, if you're going to impose that kind of condition, it's just fuck the town council. It's beyond your jurisdiction, I don't want to get in a battle over this, I'm not going to convince anybody. If that's your condition, I would not impose the condition, I'd readily recommend. You talk to town council, make sure that it's within your jurisdiction and if he advises, we will advise AT&amp;T for it.
That's fine.
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask town council, so then one might come on, this is that, that will be raised to higher level, you know, I mean, right now, we would give a little bit of a motion, but I agree.
Then can we have, he says amended what he said?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Well amended it, or what you said about um. Prior to installation, blah, blah, blah.
Well, what I thought I just heard.
I would not, I would not do that, I mean, if you impose that condition.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm not, I'm trying to. I'm hoping number sixteen will vote away. Cause I'm.
Well, you're welcome to vote without it, true, you're welcome to do that, as a vote.
I am, I'm. Right. Let's bring out your vote and let it go from there, without number sixteen.
So is that the motion now to move without Steve's?
Yes.
Without Steve's number sixteen.
Right.
So in that case, you'd need four fifths vote.
Four of us.
It's, it's a special permit, so it needs a four fifths vote. So. Move without number sixteen.
Follow the rule.
I'm gonna make a vote in favor.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes. All right, so we have four yeses, so that means special permit passes, so I'm not gonna bother to ask town council about that. Um, I will try to get this filed next week.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have two of these.
Show them up right five minutes.
Move to.
Thank you.
Five minutes.
Five minutes, take a little right second. We're back.
You're good, continue on.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Minutes. Move to approve minutes of. Eight, eight, twenty four.
Second, I'll start.
Aye.
Karen, yes, we did spend some money. Move to. Move to approve the following requisitions, one thousand six hundred twenty dollars to B and W Enterprises LLC for printing of zoning bylaws and maps. Seven hundred eight dollars, twenty nine cents to Horsey Witten Group for construction, peer review services for Seaside and situ. For four hundred dollars to Horsey Witten Group for peer review for one thirty three Flat Road. One thousand fifty two dollars, fifteen cents to McGill Consulting LLC for return of guarantee funds for fourteen to sixteen Old Country Way. For five thousand eighteen dollars, sixty nine cents to Mally. Not quite all, LLC for return of surety for fourteen to sixteen Old Country Way. And twelve thousand seven hundred sixteen, seven, sixteen dollars and seventy five cents to Marble Homes for return of surety and guarantee funds. For fifty three, five thirty three and five thirty five Country Way.
I'm a failure.
Aye.
I think a lot. Oh, no way, update of the M C A interviews. All right, so I received an email from E O H L C on eight fifteen S weeks recent, the G I S files, the community general approval letter. And the town clerk's certification for pole compliance application. I have heard no response back from E O H L C. I sent same email to R and K consultant and asked them to verify that everything was in there and I have yet to hear R consultant yet either.
They're all finished.
On the beach.
They're better.
So. They're looking at our stuff, so that's good. In my opinion. Okay, so we don't have to do anything with the child, we already have, we're already doing everything. No, the barn's already closed, we are not providing anything for the fall delegation. We'll have to take things as they come. Zone for our twenty five projects. Alright, so you were all sent some you were all sent um eight twenty two twenty four draft zoning changes for accessory dwellings that include two definitions. I just handed you out a revised draft that includes more definitions. And I did not change anything with accessory dwellings. So what we read on the staff was what we got, but we added more definitions. The reason for adding more definitions is that we're working also with um the C B A. I'm adding some definitions that they want to have added into the zoning bylaw.
What kind of definition?
Uh additions, building, um structure. And there may be, there may be more. Our definitions do not have anything for addition, building, structure. We also added cooking facility. I was still working on that definition when um when I sent this out to you. But cooking facility, occupancy and short term rental relate to the accessory dwelling bylaw. Now, accessory dwelling, new bylaw, does not have to be over occupied. That's correct. And I have to tell you about. How can we help the state amend that? I think it's a good mistake. Well, they passed it in the state law, so at this point we have to comply. They technically, things don't take effect till February second. Is there any possibility to have them really think long and hard about not having? I I just forget it. I don't get it either. I voiced my objections to that at a couple of like social coalition type meetings. And this is what the state wants because they perceive um that accessory dwelling, you know, to go to add a lot of places. And satisfy some of the housing shortage that we have right now. I agree with that. I do. I agree with that premise. However, I would also see that. People will buy up properties, whatever, and they're term of age rentals. Well, they might be rentals, but they can't be used for short term rentals. True. It's 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 that's what's written in the law and that's what's written right in this bylaw. They cannot be used for short term rentals. Alright. As long as.
No, what what can't be used?
An accessory boat. Or it's.
What's in there? What was the definition of terminal rental?
I it's 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 right here. It's 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 in the it it says, you know, that you could. It's it's copied right from section one sixty four G that's referenced in the Affordable Homes Act. And so I copied that definition directly and then I decided to put a definition of occupancy in there as well. Because occupancy gives time periods. And town council is uh just a brief, brief phone call said, yes, that that is the right thing to do. Short term. So then was there expecting anything in the public labor? Well. Um. Well.
There's lines that are pulling off there. Um, there's stoves every time the fire car comes in. They don't have to do that anymore. Um, it's just like all over the day. I think they're solid. So I think everyone's got.
It's. Well, and that's why you that's why you asked for a definition of cooking facilities too, because what you wanted to enforce was different about the building.
I I I don't want.
Well, right, but the board.
I guess that I first of all, because now this makes my basement an accessory lot. Because I've got a convention, direction of it and sits down there and I use it at Thanksgiving.
No, you can't allow to have more than one kitchen in your house. That goes back to.
There's no sink in there. I think you need a sink.
That goes back to the Ernie Bob cakes.
I think you need a sink.
Okay, so let's put that.
Same. But that's reasonable because people keep stuff. And actually, somebody had that little hot plate that heats up water and they drink warm water all day long. You could put that in a section of your house and some would go ahead and say. That's a good idea. Cause that's not the.
Yeah, so you want to add us into that.
But I guess because that's the one thing I understand. I have a second batch for this.
Well, no, you're not saying the accessory boat. What's the other files for the being accessory boat?
Well, but you can get a boost of that in accessory.
You can get accused of it. Right.
And I've had.
So what happens if you're accused of?
Well, well, the chances in this somebody. Somebody that somebody found that the board health tells you, you gotta have another stub or for that whole that's a book on that. Lots of stuff can add in this. I'm proud selling it. Um.
I I will alter the definition because I just need a sink. I when I first did this definition, my definition was a little bit different. I used this definition from from some of the information Chris Carshig gave me, but I will add, which is something that I had, um in kitchen facilities.
Yeah, so maybe I don't understand that decision. I mean, that excuse me definition, whatever. Same. Would be sinks, stoves. Like people have a like, you know, given bars that have risks. You know, it's been things and yeah, they might have, who knows what about that? I don't know. But they don't need an accessory dwelling because a place that they can put out.
So man, I will work. I will work around that.
Right, they are, but trust me.
You get people that are.
Stickers?
Stickers. Well, you know, we. I know. I I'm hearing one side of the story.
That's why I asked. So just wanted to.
One side of the story. Other people have a different side of the story. The zone is two thousand.
Alright, so I will work on that definition and add something, you know, um kitchen facilities, you know, needs of paranormal within a well near in a kitchen facility.
Yeah, so that means like counters and.
Yeah. I don't.
Are you just like being? Yeah, kitchen facility.
Yeah.
Cause that's.
And so I'll I'll add I'll add something about kitchen facilities in there and, you know, but to try to um. The. But what does the board think about the verbiage of? I tried to do what you instructed me to do last time. You said you wanted two two square parts. You wanted. Buy um cycle review and you want some of them buy special permit as well. You wanted to. You wanted a category for between nine hundred and uh half as a special permit. And you want it detached by um special permit as well. I agree with that.
It's fifty percent. Oh, it's forty percent.
Forty percent. The space. Law is now fifty percent. I think.
But it's limited to nine hundred square feet.
Yes.
Yes. Well, whatever is law.
Yes.
It's nine hundred square feet or half of the gross square four, whichever is lesser.
Right.
You guys said you wanted to be able to, because our bylaw now permits. A little bit larger accessory dwelling. And so we're saying between half gross and nine hundred, we can get a special permit for that.
I think that's very reasonable.
Yeah, no, what I'm saying is from nine hundred up. The hiring unit is forty percent of the gross because that's what it is today.
That's the special permit.
That's the special permit.
Right, right, but it's going to be fifty percent else.
No, it's forty percent because that's what it is today. We're not increasing the standard for what we have, but.
Alright, so you want to keep that at forty percent. Okay, alright, alright. I guess.
It's reasonable. Right. Yeah.
I agree with you.
I still get the fifty percent, but no greater than nine hundred, right? That's that's a different standard.
Fifty percent is. Fifty percent is basically by a right fifty percent of your house, but whenever it's over nine hundred, that is smaller.
Yeah.
Alright. So.
Right.
Forty percent and nine hundred, those two limits are special permits.
Correct.
Okay.
So they can go over nine hundred up to forty percent of the gross area.
Okay, that's.
Which is what I think you did there.
Yes. Let's just. Tiny tiny houses.
No, don't go to tiny houses because that's a that's another whole section of the Affordable Homes Act.
Yeah. Yeah.
No.
But your community has to be designated um a certain designation and they're and we're not.
Well, I'm. I'm actually a question. Are we psyched through you? The these new um accessory dwellings. That are just in our system. Those are different right now to the basements. So so we're going to split all those. Can you be busy?
No, we're we're not going to go out and try to do no enforcement. What we're going to do is we're going to ask for cycle and review for any new accessory dwelling that comes in, just like you require a special permit now.
Right, as.
We have the right to ask to have.
Oh, I see.
Right, to to make sure they're following standard. We're not going out.
And they're still coming, but.
Yes, yes, yeah.
And we.
So if it's nine hundred or less, it would be a cycle review. If it's greater than nine hundred, four hundred percent of this area, it would be a special permit.
Right.
And this is to make sure that um. We don't end up with suddenly putting up a garage and saying it's an exercise place for the bathroom and suddenly it turns into an accessory park.
Well, that would be possible.
Shoot.
We'll probably never be able to enforce that.
I know. Accessory enforcement. Steve, something. Lee, let me ask you this question. You both can do this, but we talked about this last time. People on Amhill, they had. Very father was an architect.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't. So they had to put. They had to build home house for that accessory dwelling because the barn was too close.
Right.
So to me, that's. Um, I I would agree with that because now we're just putting another building on land and using up more land. And I understand it. But they have done a zoning better. But I understand, but it would've been easier just to stick the apartment in that barn if you want.
But but no, we're not. We don't commit that. That's been in the zoning bylaw for a long time now. Added in a suggestion of the building commissioners a long time ago because they don't want to create barns that don't meet setbacks as accessory dwellings. Because that's, you know, you can start worrying to privacy issues.
The barn is already full.
I know, but we we specifically say that the barns actually need all current setbacks.
Yeah, why why I'm I'm not sure I follow your example.
My my example is you got this piece of property. So now you have a house, your accessory dwelling house, and you have a big old barn that probably nobody's using. And it would have been easier just to put the accessory dwelling in the barn. You'd have a lot of those kind of, I would say.
Oh, absolutely.
To remove.
We don't. So I'm hoping that maybe we just.
But they're already there. So instead of putting, you know.
But they don't.
I know they want to cram a bunch of houses in as much as they can. State has a lot. You also want to keep some lawns, some grasses, some trees. So anytime you go to build a new building, cut these property.
And have some.
Take it away from the environment.
You need to.
So that's that's my thought about.
So we 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 go on.
But is that what somebody? They're going to want to convert the barn or did they just want to build a new structure?
Well, they maybe they didn't, but they didn't have that choice.
And I think that's a nightmare. I'm sorry.
Say.
Well, you that's why we.
That's why.
And that's why they put this in a long time ago that any detached structure had to meet the required the current setbacks. Because some of these barns have are right on the property line. And is that very fair that you get to build because you don't have an existing barn, you get to build something in it that doesn't need setbacks and?
You you end up with an occupied. Uh building that was not occupied. An occupied building that's on property lines now making over some property.
Yes.
I can understand that. We we sort of had that up. It was one where they were building, looking at it, just like looking over, you know.
That's right, but it met the setbacks. It met the setbacks. Let them one.
Yeah, but that net setbacks, that generally was right over the property. It's probably a motion of this.
So. I I need you guys to tend to give me some input on this to say, are we going in the right direction? Are we not going? We have to meet the right definition. But, you know, do I add a whole bunch of stuff in there? Do you agree with it? Not agree with it? What do you what do you what's this the boards want?
I would. I succeed.
Yeah, I'll 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 fix. I'll work on that.
Yeah, let's get to that.
Here, I'm like, I'm like, I want to keep it. I I like. That was my.
Okay.
But I would I would like to review the.
Alright, that's that's fine, but.
I like the direction you're going.
Let me tell you the schedule. Okay, let's start there. We can talk about this for a while, but we're having a public workshop in December. And we are having a public hearing in Jett. Cause we want to be advertised before February. Well, plus I'm technically, we're supposed to have final wording by December, which is.
Okay, so we just need to get final wording. We need to have this figured out and.
Right, and so that's why you guys can digest it and we can, you know, we can keep working on it. You know, you can tell me what you like, what you don't like. Um, but I will, I would definitely work on cooking facilities. Um, you know, and. You know, I it's not formatted. Don't worry about that, but let me know what you want in there, what you don't want. Do you want?
So um just in terms of the previous accessory dwelling standard class here. Have you? Have you removed things that are no longer allowed by state law?
Yes.
Like the artist stuff.
You don't want any additional um definitions.
What?
You don't want any additional definitions, just. Well, this is where we are today.
That's what I.
I think we we may be having more definitions coming in, but this is where we are today. I think it's going to be an easier process if the planning board sponsors the whole. Like all of cha- all of definition changes, all the the accessory dwelling changes. So after you guys give your input and give a first crack, you know, this is what we pretty much want to see. Then I'm going to start shopping around town hall. I'm going to send it to the C B A. I'm going to send it to the building commissioners and say, this is what the planning board wants. Do you see any issues with it in terms of the rest of the zoning bylaws?
As long as we don't have a meeting at one thirteen in the morning.
They don't guarantee that. We can't. You can't guarantee that, but you know, they have to do zoning.
And in the.
In the order of the charter. So that's. And try.
So this is the this is the new law. Um prohibit short term rentals?
It prohibits short term rentals for accessory dwellings.
Accessory dwelling.
Right, and so that's what we're prohibiting in here. And that's why I have to include the definition of short term rentals.
So you don't have. Well, what about the main house?
Doesn't address.
Doesn't address the primary and maybe it should address the primary. Because if it does not need to be over occupied. And you have the accessory dwelling and then. You deny short term rentals, I think you need to do the same thing. For the primary, especially if it is not over occupied.
I can certainly ask town council that question. I mean.
Well, that gets us into the conversation. Everybody please.
Yeah, we don't. We're not going there at this point in time.
Well, you put that in here, you're going.
No, I'm not.
For a primary residence, yeah.
No, only with accessory parks.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Why 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 do you limit if everybody else can do it? Why is somebody with accessory dwelling or can't they?
I mean, the bylaw is the legislation says the A D U.
Correct.
It doesn't say anything about the primary. I've given you all copies of the curtains.
Right, right, yeah.
But I can ask.
I don't need to pick up the primary unless you're going to pick up the issue.
Uh, yeah.
And why?
Town council thinks we should be taking up the issue, but it's it's a complicated issue. We we're not going to take it up for this town meeting. Because it's too much work to do for this town meeting and it's something that requires a lot of studying. It means you're needing a whole. We need to do a whole lot of work on. We need to do a whole lot of work on it before, but, you know. I can ask the question, but, you know.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
Where's the going to say?
I think they can ask.
I think I'll take it. If we're trying to just get informed with the session. If you wanna take up the primary, if you have too much barns.
Yes.
I I don't think it's fair to. Just if just to put it in, please.
I mean, we do, I do have a sentence in here, uh. Accessory dwelling units or the related primary dwellings shall have a minimum occupancy or a maximum of thirteen consecutive days, then probably. I don't know if that's going to be legal, but.
You covered that.
So I think I think we have, I mean.
Well, I think that takes it on weird, right?
All right, so I.
So you're already doing it, right?
I I'll ask.
Unless for that.
All right, so I will ask about that, yeah, I will ask. I'm okay with the other conditions I've put on? Okay. You know, just send me an email, you know, but.
Sort of then later.
Right, sort of later, so that we can, I'll make changes for the next meeting, and we'll keep talking about it till you're. Till you're satisfied that this is the bylaw you want to go forth with for. For a town meeting. And can I tell you what, I just.
Did you send this this word up?
I did.
Oh, you did?
Oh, no, I would, the news got, I'll send this word down, yes, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Send it to me as a meeting. What is our? Accessory dwelling. Bylaw, what number is that now?
Five thirty.
So this is going.
This is replaced with that, right?
Is to replace five thirty. The whole of five thirty is going away.
Okay, so where is?
It's those 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 four holes.
Affordable.
Two steps of dwelling.
Uh, no, that's that's still in there, I'm not touching that, I don't think replacing five thirty. One, two, three, so I misspoke with that. Um, it it'll all it'll all be formatted for the next meeting.
No, at that time, just, so we don't have the other.
You don't have the affordable accessory dwelling.
But, no, I'm asking about the one that if the. Open one happens.
Yes.
It says the back.
This number.
Lost.
Five thirty point two, thirty point two F. And maybe I didn't order right, but, you know, that's the concept. Away to the F.
No, I think it's, I think it's on the back, maybe.
Yeah, it's on the back page.
I think it's kind of in, might be in the wrong.
It might be in the wrong page, I mean, I I'm sorry.
I saw when I looked at this.
It's five thirty four forty D.
Oh.
Accessory, oh, so D. So I think, I think we, yeah, I think this should be like special.
And that's gonna be four.
Accessory dwelling, um, with special permits or requiring special permits. Okay, and I do think we should keep it, we should just keep the bylaw what we have for the. Yeah, open that kind of.
Yeah.
They wanna still.
No, 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 that's.
It's almost like you want.
No, but it's actually, I think, because most towns are just gonna, that didn't have this bylaw are just gonna pay theirs.
You want one.
Yeah.
States, and we're we're keeping ours.
We're keeping parts of ours, I think.
We're keeping ours, but again, I agree, it should still be.
All right, I, you're right, Steve, it's five thirty point three.
Should should we take it and?
So this is.
Do a five thirty point one A or something that's applicability, and then have the two. Propolis, if it's one of the five or less.
I thought about doing that after our patent or our notice, I thought about.
Yeah, so it's all one place, you can.
Yeah, I thought about doing that after our notice.
And I, I'm sorry, did you? A accessory dwelling created with a structure used for businesses. That's a thing.
What?
You can have an accessory dwelling above a business, yep, no more than three accessory dwellings above a business. I didn't think you wanted that to go away.
You can have that.
There's.
British baggage store, a British baggage store, there's two accessory apartments above it.
Well, they kept us in accessories. At the time, they couldn't do it, at the time, there wasn't the excuse zoning.
Oh.
Okay, so in the harbor, you have accessory dwellings above businesses too. You have them.
Then they were rezoned, so so to the existing.
No, it's gonna go, you're not.
Your grandfather.
Their granddaughter. Okay. But just to be guarded, but but just to be guarded, there's three accessory apartments there. It is the galley, uh.
The galley.
Oh, okay.
You have something in Humrock?
Yeah. Okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
But she's.
But she never went to Portugal.
It's the interesting story.
Cool, cool.
And you know what, I have a.
Right, now.
He's a flat all the time.
But no, a lot of them, long business, they're not. We, the last one came in in Humrock. Since two thousand eleven, because I was here then, um.
So, um.
I I think I would put D as.
If if now everything's rezoned in the way that. As Rebecca suggested, it'll all be apartments, do we really need to carry that clause going forward?
Well, it may be a huge thing, I don't know.
Uh, I think you might still need it for Humrock. For someone else than.
For Humrock.
Humrock. Humrock is still has business district.
Oh, it doesn't have mixed use, you mean?
It, no, Humrock, you're gonna be seeing this pretty soon anyways, Humrock has a business district in our Humrock. Village residential overlay district, that they can do. Residential with business. Under very specific conditions. And we'll be seeing the project probably in the next two months.
And is that overlay, well, the entire Humrock business, or just part of this?
Yes, yes.
So that that would be.
A part of it, maybe part of it, I have to check with the lines. But you're gonna be seeing some.
So is that someone like that Egypt garage, that's not country, right?
Is that coming down?
Could that, could we put something above that?
No, absolutely, they did not put anything about that Egypt garage, the Egypt garage. Is a non-performing residential use, that's been abandoned for a long time, it can, it can, you can have a house there. But you cannot change that into a business with anything about it.
Yeah.
No longer business used.
So now and then.
It's been abandoned.
Got it. It's probably.
What's her, I keep saying it, I I get it.
I'll take it back now, yeah.
There's stuff going on.
Yeah, we just got it.
Sorry, so. But but let's just say, you've asked the business.
There's stuff with.
Yes. Yeah. So we still have, we still have some plain business areas in town, so we should.
But I think I would put D as A because.
Okay.
Nobody, only because that's, A doesn't. Why would that make me?
But what do you think?
But what do you think?
I I think.
Be your answer?
I think that.
Accessory one?
This this one.
Oh, no, I've got an idea, we should put that and combine it with the other one and put it in a special applicability section. It says, you have less than nine hundred. Or very high.
Yeah.
So means you apply.
So you want, all right, you want that, you want, all right, what do you want that capability? I was misinterpreted, I was, you want the sizes.
The size.
Yeah, the sizes, there's two, there's two decision, there's two decision.
Okay. Yeah, one.
Nine hundred or less is A, nine hundred up to forty percent, maybe.
Okay.
If B says, what is special permit, and A says, site plan.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that's good, that's.
Yeah.
All right, I will, I'll see if I understand what you're saying and try to do it for the next meeting.
Okay.
So I I think you want to say that, uh, I think if you're going to this board, the zoning board, that they came to us to ask us to help with the job issues. So they got some, and I think it's a problem for sure. Above that we have not always got a lot.
Right.
So this is, I think, is very difficult.
Right, and we need to talk to each other, yeah.
Do we know why it wanted these, were these related to accessory dwellings or related to something else?
Related to lots of stuff.
Yeah, related to lots of stuff.
Lots of stuff.
Lots of stuff.
Lots of stuff.
Yeah, so what's happened is.
We're we're not walking into it.
No, no.
I want some, you're up here.
I don't, I don't think so, I think there's some. I think there's some basic definitions that our bylaw does not have, and if our, they're not defined here, there is, there. Our bylaw basically says you use a state building. And I think that.
Oh, so these definitions are different from the state.
Kitchen facilities, would they?
A little bit, not a lot.
When?
A little bit.
A little.
So this is, this is a response issue that they can have.
But, but, you know, when.
Yeah, I just don't wanna take on those issues along with.
I know. I I believe that somebody will be here next meeting who can help explain why they want certain things.
That'd be good.
Um, but they just couldn't be here tonight. And, you know, so. Again, I think it's a building question.
Yeah, that's good, that's all, is is anybody ready for lays on the floor?
That's right.
I think.
We're, Rebecca's asking.
How far, do you think that we can take that? A lot of the, first of all, do you think, apparently a lot of times tonight happens?
A lot of people want to have it in as long.
So do you think there's any way that they can afford it?
Um.
I don't want to.
I don't think so, because most of the verbiage in the accessory dwellings. Never changed from the first, all along with the house worries, it didn't change. And so even though over a lot of objections. For towns, I mean, in our town included, where you have still some lots that are five thousand square feet and that probably could be built on. Now, if you also look at this affordable homes act, look at section ten, section ten. You, I, it's in the printout, but that that's a specific instance where they said the law of merger does not apply.
Seriously?
I really.
Wait, where is that?
That's on, that was ten on the printout that you gave us.
I gave you the printout that says affordable homes act.
Seven, seven.
Last time. Uh, so it's running from the section ten to. That's, that's a big deal.
That is a big deal, but it talks about ten thousand square foot, you know, minimum lot. It tells you what you can build, you can build maximum of eighteen hundred and fifty square feet, three bedrooms. So it's very, very specific, so I don't know, you know, who wanted that, but it's, you know.
That last sentence, it showed up, but used as a small home short term.
Right, now, you know what comes to.
It's very specific.
What comes to mind says, uh, is the, um. Structure that was built down on third cliff, this one, oh, this one, I got it.
Yeah.
Where they took two lots.
Yeah.
And joined them and built the shoebox, the cement shoebox.
Who uses?
No, third cliff.
But they can do that, I mean, the lot, the lot has to be at least ten thousand square feet.
I'm not sure that it was.
Well, but.
So that was then.
That was that, but, I mean, this is a very specific instance where the law of merger is not.
There's something you have a piece of property, one of those.
Right.
I mean, I'm sure we have lots in this town that meet this requirement. And I'm sure certain youngers are already looking at all that, that would be.
There's some other town where this is a big issue.
That exactly, exactly, what was that?
Can you get it here?
Yes, what'd you say, it's it's a big issue somewhere.
Yeah.
Of course it is.
There's some legislated through that.
Right, some legislated through that, because that was not in a lot of the original. Verbs.
That can be seen.
Nothing used to the.
Or street.
Well, I imagine they've given some argument, yeah. Now, I think it might have been, they've been playing around with accessory dwellings for a while, but more here, it was push, was pushing it as.
As.
Affordable.
Affordable.
Such thing.
All right, so any comments, you know, just be down to me, then, you know, we can go from there.
We may as well.
Okay, I went to. The housing trust. And there's a new forty B in the office. It is. A new forty B, forty B, it is going to be.
Can we just preface something that they, they haven't even applied for project eligibility?
May I, may I, may I please continue?
That'll.
And do I understand it, because I will get to that one.
Right, but I just, people listen and say, new forty B, and that's what they hear.
Okay, as Karen has pointed out, there has been no letter of the facility. They are basically shopping this to the different boards. And it's far, we're doing it back end to, if you will. And it is on Stockbridge Road, it's a piece of property in front of Stockbridge Landing or. Stockbridge Landing, it's twelve. Six duplexes. So it's twelve units, three of which will be affordable units. And they will have three bedrooms in each unit, which I think is. Better than seven forty.
So that's in the entrance?
Yes, that's in the entrance, it's, uh, here.
Or is that one of the other places?
Right, and it, here are the pictures of it, anybody wants to see them. And then, um. They were also saying. How the trust was talking about. A piece of property on Stockbridge Road that's tied in Seventh Brickway. And they're concerned that if. That property was sold, would they lose this affordable? Piece of property, but I'm not sure that's gonna happen, supposedly, the, um, applicant is shopping right now, financing. For his property.
I've sent him an email and I get no response from.
Well, I heard that last night.
And so. I sent him an email, I said, your, your special permit expires November seventeenth.
Yep.
What's going on?
So.
Is this?
Yes, uh, seventy, seven, the old mountain building on the.
No, yeah.
And.
So this is right off the, the new entrance.
Yeah, it's right like in there, sure, yeah.
It's right up the front, but why does it need to be a four?
That's what I'm thinking, because they don't like it. And they're also going to shop with the, um. Wastewater treatment plant, see if they're gonna fuck up sewer.
The housing trust is shopping about this?
No, dear, they're not. No, the people that came in with the, the, and they are shopping different boards. Including sewer, because it it's a shortcut to a connection, supposedly. So there's that. And then, um. It it's been all over the place, what I don't know, is in the treatment plant or not, that torn dock was thinking about taking the ones up the donuts, they turned it into, um.
Taco bar.
A taco bar, the little rises.
That's it, it's true.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, you might have to set plan wait for the next time, you don't have yet.
That would be nice.
I mean, I just.
You you might have to set plan wait for the next time.
So that was all at, um.
When are they open?
Yeah, I can't understand.
It's getting next.
Also too, um, allocations are available for smaller projects for. People who need to fix a fence or or fix something, with money available to the trust. A lot of applications are available to local housing trust website.
And I, I'm sorry, which is only a couple of chapters.
So, that's all who's. I know, and CPC needs coming Monday night because they need to go on the last time, and I guess students out of rags. By the process, bicycle dance. I'm sorry, that's just.
I mean, yeah, I know, I don't know how to show you, I think I.
I tried to do it, I.
I don't know, we're all tired.
All right, so. I'm just gonna clarify again that this is not a forty B, because they don't even have project eligibility, right? Um, we're still waiting, the town still hasn't heard on the first parish. Project eligibility letter either, they should hopefully be hearing by the end of the month. But that's not real yet. Um. Currys Estates has until ten one to finish, I don't have any final ask builds, you want to call them in in September?
I would, yep.
They want the.
So he wants, he wants the surety back.
No, he's not asking for surety back, I'm asking him, what's up, your project is supposed to be fully done. No, he's not asking for surety back, I'm asking him, what's up, your project is supposed to be fully done by October first. And I need to see an askups.
Has he finished the payment?
Yep. So.
That's true.
Which meeting you want? Twelve to.
Middle arguments?
Twelve from the twenty sixth.
If you want.
Well, it's gotta be done by October twenty sixth, okay.
Alright, so I will ask them to come in on the twelfth and tell us where they are. Um, you know, likely I have a way around the twelfth. Eighteen Drew has um started construction, he's expecting the board together tomorrow. Fourteen to sixteen O Countryway and five thirty three Countryway are done. Um. Construction is going well at the tennis courts. Um, Seaside and Situate, I had a conversation with um the new guy this week and. Um, he said he was saying you're coming, you're gonna come in for surety reduction. I said, that's not a very wise move to to be.
They paid them there?
No, yeah, no, no talk though, and I said, first of all, and you haven't even acted on the actual reduction.
Yes.
So, um, I tried to talk it out a bit, and so as a result, will we have any site visit in early September? Um.
So wait, you're gonna.
Yes, it's really my.
I I'm just gonna go with them.
Okay.
I mean, I've I've asked for our consulting.
Oh, I think you're saying.
I've asked for our consulting engineer to be there, and we're gonna reveal the staff's.
You push this.
Um, Sterns Meadow is um. We're getting some information submitted, I've heard the decision, the SWIP and um the deep watering plan. And um survey work is occurring now, um, they think they're going to start construction in September. I reminded them that micro construction leaving was not the one that we have here. And that that's one that's um before anywhere. Um.
She started working September.
Let's work, that's what I tried, yeah. Oh, yeah, that's what they think. Um, nineteen Ford, I heard, is going to uh also restart construction in, you know, the next few months. Um, they know that they have to, um, they they don't have the decision, they have to prevent endorsement. They want to change to building locations, um, they kind of wanna flip two buildings. It's, that's something I would think that's something the board would wanna see and decide if that's going to be the modification.
When will you, when I take the word is?
It's the cottage part.
Is that um. Steve Leach?
Yes, yes.
And and what do they want to do?
He wants to switch two buildings, and I told the person who's going to be construction managing it, Mr. Railway. Um, that I I needed to see that. And he goes, is that gonna have to go before the board? Well, I said, well, let me see it first, I wanna see. Exactly what you're doing before I make any decisions. So.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if you think it's, I think, yeah, we'll do, you'll be. If you take any stuff, those.
Right now, if you remember, the two buildings on the side, the porches were basically all looking into the center court. So two of them had the porches and they were opposite. And Burke was trying to tell me, say, they wanna move the. The porches to the other end. Of what a one.
So they're not facing.
So they're not face, so they're not facing the the porch on the other side. Nope. So I have to see it first, but you know, I can, let me see it, and then I can send it out.
So you're trying not to have porches oriented, right?
Yeah, right.
Where you're trying to get them offset.
Right, right. If that's the only thing.
What's this?
Several was not staring at each other.
Right, yeah, because you know, courtyard type lights, thirty feet wide, so I mean, go on. Anything on thirty three, um, your point, about thirty three. I suspect.
No, John, someone?
I suspect that we might be having sensitivity on some of the projects if the interest rates drop. You are, we are expecting several new projects, we're expecting to run central apartment, we're expecting school. Um. I have others as well.
When when do we expect the school?
Um, they told me end of September, October, we're expecting the five year at Martha Family. Um, in North Situate. Um, so, I mean, everybody says they're gonna be applying at the end of September, October.
Okay.
So, um, and we're likely to get the other small cell from Harvard too. So things are going to get.
Great.
Is that, is that what they, is this what, also?
Yes, yeah. Um, anything further on? Tentacles, that property, nothing?
They, are they opening the festival?
Oh, Saint Peace is open. Saint Peace is open again.
Well, I know that.
The oyster man is being fed up, that's that's projected to.
That that going to be a blast.
Yeah, yeah, that's projected to open in November.
Right, they said that, right, so.
Right.
And then Purple Dino is open.
Oh, yeah.
It looks very fancy.
Very fancy.
Very fancy.
And Route one four three.
No, momentarily, we have to walk. It's just a matter of time.
We're walking. That's how we are.
We get to take them all through.
So.
Oh, wait.
Alright.
What's he go fast, but now you said.